Good evening and welcome to the City Council's special meeting of Tuesday, February 27th, 2024. There are three items on the agenda. The first of these is an update and discussion of the micro transit pilot program. Mr. Taylor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try to be quick in my PowerPoint. I know it was distributed previously and I know you have three other, or two other items. So if I feel, if you feel like I'm rushing, it's because I am. I want to get to it. I want to get to the discussion and try to get some direction as we move forward with this program. So let's skip the agenda. So I'm going to go back to the beginning, you know, and talk about what microtransit is, get into how we got here, talk about where we are, and then about where we could go depending on your direction. So microtransit over the last six, seven, eight years has emerged as a way in the urban environment to provide a little bit nimbler transit service that kind of in between a bus and a taxi, right? Smaller vehicles, more on-demand. And again, it's not necessarily on a fixed route bus system. It might go somewhere where it's less dense or, and where big buses don't make sense. So we did talk about microtransit as we developed the Go Norman Transit Plan back in 2020 and 2021 with our consultant, Nelson Nygaard. We talked about maybe northwest or southeast Norman. And then we, as we got into the recommendations, it was decided to kind of put that on pause because for one, it would result in the largest increase in the transit budget, which we've kind of seen that cost, right? Depending on what we want, it does cost money to do this, just like with anything else. And then we also identified, meaning the Colts consultant, staff, citizens, you all when council approved the plan, identified there was greater needs, particularly a frequency for the existing bus service or when we implemented the route changes with that, that bus service. So it's not that we didn't talk about it. It's just that there were greater needs that were identified. So it wasn't in the plan. However, through a discussion with council over a couple of years, we got into what is microtransit. It was suggested by a, by a council member to look at it. And we spent about a year talking about it, a few months, study sessions going into it. And in FY23, we got a budget of about $750,000 to implement a microtransit pilot program. Quickly realized that we needed to narrow down what that means because again, what, it can accomplish a lot of goals depending on what your community needs or what you want to test out. So we, we hired H and TB to help us out on looking into that. We had a series of workshops and study sessions to go and with, with you all and council at the time to see where we might go. We looked at some data. And then overall, we ended up basically with what we have right now, late night service and then Sunday during the day when we don't have fixed route ser, uh, bus service. And through RFP 222359, we asked for some, for some vendors to come back with their proposals. And in that RFP, I'm not going to go through all of these, but we just detailed what we came up with during those study sessions, right? We had a, we needed a budget. We needed to serve downtown, OU, complement our fixed route service. We needed them to kind of figure out, help us figure out what kind of service we need based on, based on the hours of service we wanted, and that's in the middle there. And we had some goals. We didn't want people to walk very far. We didn't want them to wait very long. And then vehicles, we, we did a little bit of preference on vehicles. They need at least six passengers, need to be wheelchair accessible, at least some of them. And then people needed to have ability to pay, right? So we had some specifications in that. But generally, the RFP went out for what we talked about as a council at the time. We received three proposals. The one that we, was ranked the highest by the selection committee and was forwarded to City Council was by River North Transit, which is a subsidiary of VIA Transportation who does microtransit projects all across the country. And that contract was approved on June 27th. And the contract amount there is about 640,000. And then we started, we wanted to start service preferably before school started, but that was actually the first day of school for OU. So we got pretty close. That was our goal. And this was our initial service profile. So you can see the zone there. We didn't have enough funds to cover the entire city because that would require a lot more vehicles and drivers. But we served, we, we tried to serve as much of the dense part of Norman as possible with the, you know, the desired destinations that we could see. And you, you all have seen this before, at least at CP and T, about what we, what our targets were and everything. And then after, about the time we were finalizing our partnership with VIA, our contract, it was identified that OU was going out for their Safe Ride program about the same time. So my colleague here, George Amadis, he's on our bicycle advisory committee. He's not a, he's, he's a good friend and somebody that's not a, has been on city committees before. So he's, he's been in this room and he works in student affairs and that's who manages Safe Ride. So it seemed like a good fit, right? We want to provide late night service. That's what Safe Ride does on Thursday, Friday, Saturday. How can we work together to provide an efficient service, knowing that our portion was a pilot program? So we, we got together and we were able to, thanks to other City of Norman and OU staff, we were able to combine our resources. And I, I think that was really good to see how, how it would go for, at least for the first year. And what that meant for our initial contract was we extended the service time to end on Thursdays through Saturdays from 1:00 AM to 3:00 AM to match their historic Safe Ride hours. We got the map a little bit bigger. We increased the numbers of vehicles from four to five. It did increase the cost, obviously, 121,000, but OU agreed to pay for that increase. And through that, just like the historic Safe Ride, if you were an OU student, then the rides would be provided for free during those Safe Ride hours only. So don't, can't do a side-by-side, but the zone map did get a little bit bigger. And then obviously what I just walked through with the timing is, is, is what increased. And our, our targets still stay the same. However, the percentage of ride requests completed with 20 minutes, we wanted it greater than 80%. But during that Safe Ride hours, OU was okay with students possibly getting a time to wait longer because the, the app initially said it, said it where you'd get only proposals if we can meet it within 30 minutes. So we increased that time. So some students, some late night riders actually took that up on that. If they had to wait an hour, they waited for the on-demand service. So that's kind of inflated now. But other than that, the other KPIs, we'll go through them in a minute, but we're hovering around where we wanted to be. Even with adding OU, we were able to keep the August 21 start date. We had a great unveiling event and some good press. Now kind of getting into the numbers, since we started, we've had 13,000 completed rides. Generally, people are happy with the service with five-star ratings of about 95%. And then kind of drilling down, we've had 1.6,000 who have individuals who have taken at least one ride. So there's some people that have obviously taken multiple rides. And that kind of gets into the bottom right top table, if you can see that there. OU Safe Ride eligible accounts, so those with OU.edu email addresses is about 1,100. Those that have engaged with the app at least once and requested a ride, doesn't mean they have actually taken one, but has been 2,300 or about 2,400 accounts. Those that have been completed at least one ride, again, it's 1.6,000. Those have been done two is about 1.2. And then rider accounts with at least one paid ride is 213. So obviously, as we drill down, there's a subset of accounts that are really using the service as we set the parameters with the times. And we have some more numbers here in a minute about that. So kind, kind of comparing it to our other existing transit service, the ridership per service hour at CP and T, I try to bring that up on our monthly updates because it is a good metric to keep in mind. How many rides are we serving on average per service hour we have on the street, right? So our fixed route service, you can see there in blue, initially was about 14 riders per service hour. And that really has, after, after COVID, really taken off. And we're currently at about 18.7 for fiscal year 24 to date. Paratransit's always been about one to one and a half depending, you know, it's on demand. So we try to maximize the service as much as possible. But if people are going extreme distances within our city, then we have to service them within a relative timeframe as they would be on a bus. So we can't put them on a bus or on a paratransit ride for two hours, for example. So we have to maximize that. So it could be a little different depending on the rides that are requested. And then Norman on demand has averaged since we launched about four and a half rides per, per driver hour or per service hour. So it's a little bit better, more efficient than paratransit, but obviously fixed route is really driving, is really driving the ridership and has a high rider per service hour. So just putting that in perspective on how it compares to our other transit service. I know this was requested by a couple of council members in CP and T ridership by day. So you can see that the weekends are a lot higher than the rest of the week. And then Sunday's a little inflated because we serve more service hours, especially during the day, right? So we're capturing that 1:00 to 3:00 AM, midnight to 3:00 AM in that, in that bar, plus the 10:00 to 6:00 during the day. But about 40% of rides occur between Monday and Thursday. And then about 40% of rides occur between midnight Friday through 3:00 AM Sunday. And then during the daytime, you can see there, it's about 18%. People are really, are riding it during the day on Sunday, which is good. We wanted to test that out before we possibly implemented it on a fixed route service. So just giving you a perspective on how the, the ridership uses it throughout the week. And kind of getting in our KPIs, our key performance indicators, our average walking distance is less than what we wanted to be. So that's good. The maximum walking distance, so somebody had to wait about, or had to walk 0.7 miles more than what we wanted them to be. But again, the average is much lower than that. So I think we're doing really well. Average wait time, that's higher than we wanted to be, about five minutes more, six minutes more than we wanted to be. And maximum rider wait time, again, that's kind of changing those parameters where we offer a, a longer lead-out time. So somebody wanted to wait that 63 minutes. And the way you fix these metrics is really adding more drivers and vehicles on the road, right? So that's really what it's telling us is we're hovering around where we wanted to be, at least on the averages. But to drive those down, if we wanted to, would be to add more drivers and vehicles and increase the cost of the service. So the Safe Ride, OU Safe Ride impact on our ridership data, drilling down into that, about 10% of all completed trips utilize the Safe Ride discount. Again, that's the Friday through Saturday into Sunday morning. 10:00, 10:00 PM to 3:00 AM, OU.edu students can ride for, for free. About 1,100 or about 29% of rider accounts are eligible for that discount. And 35% of all the completed rides that occurred during Safe Ride hours are those eligible accounts. So you can see that the general public is also riding it, right? During those extended evening hours. And what we see though, through the rest of the week too, is that the OU students are taking advantage of the service throughout the rest, throughout the rest of the week. So 49% of all ridership is made up of OU ridership. So I think that's good. One of the goals that we had was hopefully that the students would recognize this as a, a good thing for them, not only during the late nights, but during the, during the rest of the week, if they needed it, not just on Thursday, Friday and Saturday. So expanding their options. Going back into our KPIs, this is just another way of looking at it. Again, the average walking distance, that's the green line is our average. The blue line is what we wanted it to be. So it's, it's below. The maximum walking distance throughout the months has been high and low. So that's kind of where we pegged it in yellow. It's, it's hovering there. Average rider wait time is, is red, as we discussed. And then maximum rider wait time is also red. But again, the way to drive those down would be to expand the service in terms of drivers and hours. So back to the fare discussion. Again, we, we kept the fares relatively low thinking, you know, we wanted to have some sort of fare for this program because it was on demand, but also wanted to make it accessible to people at $2 per trip. Plus, if you had a rider with you, you'd add them for a dollar. So about $3 if you had a, somebody riding with you. And then again, with adding the OU folks, if you had an OU student email address, you would be eligible for a free ride during the 10:00, 10:00 PM to 3:00 AM Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And let's see, we also implemented a, tried to get people to sign up. The first six rides were free with this program, about 70, 7% of all completed trips have been the six free rides. So I feel like we're seeing a lot of people take the six free rides and not continue. But that could change in the future as we, if we continue the service, obviously. So that last bullet, I think there, as of January 31st, approximately 80% of all completed trips, you can see there, the numbers qualified for one or both of the promotions. So 80, about 80% of the trips were free, free rides. So in about September, we started collecting a fare. Well, in August, I guess we started collecting fare, but we really started ramping up in September and October. And you could see those fare numbers. I think December was a little down. As you get into colder weather, transit rides really decreased. People don't want to get out as much. So we've collected about 2,200 Fairbox revenues so far. And this is just a little bit more about fares. Again, the inverse of the 80% free rides, 20% have, have paid with fare. And that's, you can see there, the number of completed trips have been paid with fare, 1,500. The unique rider ID, so unique accounts have been 213 that have actually paid for fare. And then we have this super user. So after you use your six free rides, those that have used it 11 more times and paid have been 41 accounts. So those are the people that are really up there in, we'll say the upper 20% riding, right? So that works out to about an average of seven paid trips completed by a new, unique rider ID with the paid fare after their six free rides. And about 5.6% of rider accounts with at least one paid fare. Wanted to throw a heat map or two in here to just show you some high destinations and origins for the service. We're not trying to choose winners or losers here, just trying to give you an orientation of the map. So you can see the clusters, the East Lindsay area where our main bus ridership is. You can see all those apartment complexes are highlighted really well around Tradition Square Apartments. And then obviously, you may, Campus Corner and OU are a big driver of the service as well as downtown and up by the West Side Walmart and the UMP area. So, and then we have a little bit up at the Healthplex where we thought we might get some late night riders that need to either go to or from a service that they need up in that area. So, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
I was curious. Is the little dot north of Campus Corner and slightly west of Walmart go up roughly that, no, further up? Is that kind of where more Norman is?
No, more Norman would be.
Way up here. Are there any rides going out there? And they have evening classes, right?
Yeah, our zone right now doesn't extend up to Norman.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah. But this is about Rock Creek, or this is Rock Creek. So if that gives some perspective. I'm going to go quickly through this satisfaction survey that VIA conducted. We had about 45 respondents in December. Again, it was in your packet. So I want, I want to make sure we respect your time. But a lot of young riders, their frequent use is grocery shopping, work, education, recreation, the things that we typically see that we are all doing, right? When we, we get around anywhere. A lot of benefits, people say saving money. And they could click multiple options. That why, that's why the percentages kind of don't add up here. But they save money. They feel like it's safe, which I'm glad they do, reducing their commuter travel time. They feel like they were getting out more because of the service. And again, this was a limited survey. We tried to get as many responses as possible, but just giving you the, the number here, about 82% said they would be very disappointed if the service went away. And obviously, if they're using it, I would be too. So that makes sense. We have some quotes here. I won't read them all, but a lot of people, again, if they're, if they're responding and they're invested in the service, they would like to see it increased in coverage, which we'll talk about that. We have a proposal. They want to see decreased wait times. Again, they're a little higher than we want and they want to expand operation hours. So moving forward, we have some direction we need and some things we need to discuss. The initial pilot program was supposed to be end after 12 months, so August 21st of 2024. We did explore a expansion, which I'll get into in a second. But the options are really, in the short term, we either expand the service as we're about to talk about. And then after that, long-term, do we end it after the pilot program in August is up? Or do we extend the contract through fiscal year 25? So the proposed expansion is just to go to 36th on the west and make that kind of more clear and use Lindsay as the, as a southern boundary as it turns into 36th and really fill out that west side, capturing the Sooner Mall, the Ed Noble Parkway, and all the way up to Norman Regional. We also are proposing to expand the service hours for Safe Ride Thursday through, or Friday through, technically Sunday morning, from May through August. In the initial proposal, it was decided to cut that in the summer. So there's not as many riders, but we felt like doing that, if we were going to expand it, would be good because there was a lot of general community members plus Safe Ride riders that we think we would benefit from that. So we wanted to keep the service consistent if we were considering an expansion. The numbers, I, I think I reported about a $70,000 cost to CP and T a couple of months ago when we first started talking about this. And obviously, the cost is going down as we get closer to the end of the pilot program. So right now, if we started it, I think March 1st, which we would have to get on a council agenda. So that's probably not realistic. It would be about a $51,000 increase through the rest of the pilot program through August, if we did that expansion. And if we really wanted to drive down those wait times, then, then VIA provided a more premier quality of service at about 102,000. So that's just adding another vehicle to try to drive down those wait times. So those are just a couple of options for that expanded service to consider if we wanted to do that in the short term, realizing that if we keep it, if we keep the service after fiscal year 25, or during fiscal year 25, we obviously want to keep this going. So it just increased the cost. So it has long-term impacts as well. So with that, I, I hope I left enough time for discussion, but really want to go back to this. And it's, it's fairly simple, but we needed to have a discussion about the proposed expansion through the rest of the pilot program and then beyond, if we want to end the service on August 21st after the initial contract would be up or extend it. And one reason I just went through there before we start discussion is we want to make sure we give our partners at OU enough time to make changes if they need to for Safe Ride, if we decide not to continue, right? One way or another, they need to know in the next month or two, probably make a good decision on how to move forward. So.
You kind of started to get into my question. Has OU expressed interest in continuing the partnership into the next fiscal year?
Yeah, I think, I'll let George speak for himself.
Yeah, absolutely. We've, when the RFP went bust because it was over budget, Taylor really was assertive. This that he called and said, hey, I have this idea. We've been getting a lot of requests for expanding the service and we just do not have the budget to, to meet that. We've lost a lot of money. We've been dealing with flat budgets since that time. This really, you know, satisfies a lot of the requests that we get for an expansion of the service, especially for our international student community. So we would definitely like to see it continue.
Appreciate that.
Counselor Gray?
I'm in favor of the expansion. I was aware of not only shoppers that wanted to get over to Ed Noble, but also workers that worked in the evening hours.
Right.
Also cool with extending the contract for fiscal year 25, but in the back of my mind, I am concerned about how to continue to pay for it. And while I have ideas, I also think maybe approaching more Norman Tech, which would expand the area. But as I understand it, they actually have quite a bit of money to spend. And this might be something they are interested in investing in.
The expansion itself won't go up to them. We'd have to come up 12.
I mean, we can still approach them and ask them if they're interested.
It would be a good, if, if a child didn't have the money to be able to get up there with his own car, and you could provide him with some kind of transportation to him or her, transportation to get in, up there and advance themselves, that's money well spent, in my opinion. I agree with you.
So could, let me know, Taylor, if this might be a progression of, of service that, so in conversation with Brian Rutman and his board members, to think about what the, what is step one in trying to improve student access to more Norman technology programming? That a system like this where more Norman Tech might be able to participate financially like OU for that student transport, you get your more Norman Technology student ID card, you show that, you get in, we keep the stats, they help cover the cost of that student transportation need. If the demand makes itself visible in the microtransit solution that I'm sure it would provide Taylor with data to say, oh, based on this ridership, you know, maybe it does warrant a permanent bus stop at, you know, our, our place on North 12th. And it should run, you know, X times a day up to that location, if, if the numbers supported it. So that, that might be a great step one to see if the demand is there for step two.
That's kind of what we used it for Sunday service too, is to see if the demand's there for fixed route service. We do have a, a fixed route bus plan to go up to more Norman Tech. It's about the third or fourth priority in our Go Norman Transit Plan. So we could, that would serve all day and into, to 10:00 PM as well. So we could look at that too, if that's really a desire of council, is forwarding that prior, priority up, we could look at that.
Oh, invite Taylor to join me with Brian Rutman. They might also figure out and help us with cost to go from the, our campus to the Penn campus because our kids go up there too, this one. Not as big. I know it's outside of Norman, but it's, kids still got to get there.
I was aware of not only shoppers that wanted to get over to Ed Noble, but also workers that worked in the evening hours.
Right.
Also cool with extending the contract for fiscal year twenty-five, but in the back of my mind, I am concerned about how to continue to pay for it. And while I have ideas, I also think maybe approaching Moore Norman Tech, which would expand the area, but as I understand it, they actually have quite a bit of money to spend, and this might be something they are interested in investing in.
The expansion itself won't go up to them. We'd have to come up twelve.
I mean, we can still approach them and ask them if they're interested.
It would be a good, if, if a child didn't have the money to be able to get up there with his own car, and you could provide him with some kind of transportation to him or her, transportation to get in, up there and advance themselves, that's money well spent, in my opinion. I agree with you.
So could, let me know, Taylor, if this might be a progression of, of service that, so in conversation with Brian Rutman and his board members, to think about what the, what is step one in trying to improve student access to Moore Norman Technology Programming, that a system like this where Moore Norman Tech might be able to participate financially like OU for that student transport, you get your Moore Norman Technology student ID card, you show that, you get in, we keep the stats, they help cover the cost of that student transportation need. If the demand makes itself visible in the microtransit solution that I'm sure it would provide Taylor with data to say, oh, based on this ridership, you know, maybe it does warrant a permanent bus stop at, you know, our, our place on North Twelve, and it should run, you know, X times a day up to that location, if, if the numbers supported it. So that, that might be a great step one to see if the demand is there for step two.
That's kind of what we used it for Sunday service, too, is to see if the demand's there for fixed route service. We do have a, a fixed route bus plan to go up to Moore Norman Tech. It's about the third or fourth priority in our Go Norman Transit Plan. So we could, that would serve all day and into, to ten PM as well. So we could look at that, too, if that's really a desire of council, is forwarding that prior, priority up, we could look at that.
Oh, invite Taylor to join me with Brian Rutman. Moore Norman Tech, they might also figure out and help us with cost to go from the, our campus to the Penn campus, because our kids go up there, too, this way.
Right.
Not as big, I know it's outside of Norman, but it's, kids still gotta get there.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
How much would it cost to do the, a new route, a bus fixed route to Moore Norman?
Um, I'm gonna, without buying another vehicle, obviously just operational and maintenance, based on the cost we have to add a frequency on Route One Twelve, I'll probably say between four hundred and five hundred thousand to add a route, and that's at sixty-minute frequency. Or, no, that'd be a thirty-minute, because adding a bus on Route One Twelve is about two hundred and ten thousand, so.
Well.
If we didn't have to expand the fleet, right?
The cost is definitely the main concern I have, just the cost of this system versus for that same price, we could extend hours of fixed route buses, we could maybe do Sunday service, we could maybe add new routes. And we've talked about the idea of the Paratransit Service, Embark Plus, and this, and On-Demand potentially being combined in some way.
Right.
And I know, if I recall, Embark is working on making the Plus a On-Demand, right now it's twenty-four hours, you have to sign up in advance, and that's.
Yeah.
Part of the, I think if there was one thing that Councilman Berlin and Councilman Studley agreed on was this program, this is kind of their idea, but it was about trying to fill gaps where the fixed route doesn't go, the last mile type stuff, and then the lack of ADA transit options for On-Demand. So Uber and Lyft not providing ADA-accessible vehicles, and there being a demand for that. So that's kind of where this came from, we could provide an On-Demand service that isn't currently being provided by the private sector. The only complaint I've kind of heard about that is that because it only runs in the evening and late night, they can't use it during the day. And so they're still using the Embark Plus. And so part of the question for me is, is the viability of Embark Plus evolving into being a more On-Demand system and being able to address that issue?
Right. And Dr. Dylan came in, spoke about that a little bit in CPNT a couple months ago, and she has a, she has a grant through FTA to develop software to be able to do that, because it's, it's not so much as just adding On-Demand capabilities. She talked a little bit about the different programs we get money for, so the software needs to be able to change, you know, bill easier through the different grant programs. So she has a grant to implement the software to be able to do that, so it's pretty much assured that that will happen.
And as we talked before, by law, we're only required to provide the Embark Plus service within, is it one, two miles?
Three quarters of a mile.
Three quarters of a mile of a fixed route bus system.
Right.
But we offer it for all two hundred square miles of Norman. Even though we don't have to, but we do, and that probably costs quite a bit.
We could run that number, but it, I mean, obviously, again, going back to the, the rider wait time, if somebody wants to go out to Lake Thunderbird, we're gonna have to dedicate a vehicle to take somebody out there, right? So it is taking a whole vehicle to drive somebody out farther east and back.
So part of my question would be, is, is it, would it be cheaper for this service to cover all of Norman like that for ADA, maybe, maybe only, I don't know? Or is it more cost-effective to continue providing Embark Plus service to the whole city limits? Something, something along those lines.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's kind of where I had the, how do we manage the cost of it? It's popular, it seems like, and hopefully it'll continue growing in popularity, and maybe that results in expanding it to other areas, too. But weighing that with improvements that could be made to the fixed route system, which does have a lot of ridership and keeps growing month by month. But yeah, I don't, I don't think I'm in a position to want to end this program yet. And I don't know if the information we would need about Embark Plus and other stuff would be ready by the time we would need to make a decision. So, I don't know, maybe we keep it going as a pilot for another year, work on those other aspects.
And going to your point about expanding the operational hours, that was a conscious decision because it felt like we were double-dipping if we're providing fixed route buses plus the On-Demand in the same area. We're kind of using, we'd rather expand the options of transit into the evening hours where fixed route doesn't provide, right? So it does overlap a little bit, but.
So I've tried to explain to folks the balance of, well, we didn't have late night service, and we didn't have Sunday service at all.
Right.
And now we do with this program, but yes, it doesn't run. There are some people that would find, that have a need to use it at the same time that the buses run, I think is.
Yeah, I, I understand that it would be, some people may prefer the On-Demand over the bus during the daytime hours, but we didn't want to, again, overlap very much because we were providing service during the day fairly robustly.
So I don't know if we could maybe look at starting a little bit earlier in the day, or three in the afternoon, or something where there's a little bit of overlap between daytime stuff. I don't know what the cost of that might be.
Yeah, every, every option proposal is obviously gonna widen the gap of the, the contract, right, of what we need to provide, so.
And could there be other sources of funding that we might be able to access because we're providing this service now and weren't before? Maybe we can get more allocation from the federal government per year, I don't know.
Yeah, our, our allocation, because we're a small urban, is just based on population and population density, it's not based on ridership or vehicle miles, travel like the larger systems, so. And we use all of our grant funds to pay, we go above and beyond right now with the sales tax, obviously, so I don't think we're in a position to have any of our grant funding pay for it, so. And I would say if we're already at seven hundred and sixty thousand now for the service, it's probably gonna go up next year, just due to cost increase and everything, so, plus the expansion. And then if you add, we're, it's almost, three, four, five, six, it's not doubling the hours, but if we go to three eight, three PM, for example, that's a pretty big swath if you do it from Monday through Saturday. So just something to keep in mind, if we come, if we were to explore that and come back, it's probably exceeding the one million dollar mark.
Councilmember Schuler?
So the slide that has the cost of expansion?
Yes.
So that fifty-one thousand would be for the remainder of this contract, right through August? So is that for, that's also for the expanded boundary and extending Safe Ride through August? Like, it includes both of them?
It includes both of them.
Okay.
And that's for six months, so if, again, if we go another year, just think about the doubling of that.
Sure. So what is the cost of, what I'm trying to get at is like, what would OU's proportion of that expansion be for those several months that, like, were not initially in the contract?
Yeah.
And does OU have expanded capacity to pay a little bit more percentage-wise for what you're using?
So just starting off, the cost of the, the added Safe Ride hours, it wasn't much in the grand scheme of this cost, so.
Okay.
We haven't discussed, we just wanted to gauge the willingness of doing that first and see how it went, but I'll let George answer if there's any.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, it was, I think we've capped out one type of our funding, there might be other opportunities. But I think this was, I first approached Taylor about this and saying, hey, can we just get this going through the summers, and Safe Ride has always operated during the summer? And I showed him our ridership numbers, and they're pretty low. I think.
Okay.
Our main goal has been that we run every weekend, and this was kind of a significant change to our, to our service. And I think at that time, Taylor went back to VIA, and there was a broader, you know.
Okay, yeah, just trying to understand, because I know the summers are gonna be probably less volume than what is typical. So just trying to understand, too, like, if we expand service, then what is OU's proportion to that, and just making sure that, like, you're willing to, I guess, come up with a little bit more money if, if needed for expansion and some different things. I, I've heard from some people about expanding, and I think they are in this little boundary here, which is that little section that, Twenty-Fourth between the highway and Twenty-Fourth that wasn't covered before, so that's part of Ward Two. And so like, I think that that would be a benefit, and I like picking up Ed Noble and kind of the shopping along there, as well as all of the different restaurants and things that people could be working late. And I agree with Councilmember Rohman, I, I'm not ready to say, let's stop this. Like, I think that it's been a really great service, and I think that it is generating momentum with the community, and I think that, you know, some of the numbers show that increased kind of expansion. And I think, too, like, you know, George was talking about, international students and, you know, community members that are here that, you know, don't have a car, and those are the types of things that we want to facilitate. We want to be a walkable, you know, easy mass transit kind of community, and those are things that we, we value. And so if we're wanting to keep students here potentially, long-term, like, this is something that I think is a benefit to the community as a whole. And I'm glad that OU is part of the program, because I think, you know, OU students, it's a great opportunity for them to have a service like this.
Councilmember P. Cock, did you still have a question?
Nope, got answered, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I noticed some slide that there's a program for unbanked individuals to get On-Demand. How does that work? Because I, the reason I bring this up, so I had an individual come to me that said that they could not get their credit card to work on the On-Demand, and they even showed me trying to put it in, and it was like, and it was the same card they used for the roof. And so I told them to call up there and see what they could do.
Yeah.
Also, this was a very low-income individual, and so for the individual that do not have banks and don't have credit cards, how did they go about this? Can you just explain?
Yeah, so you should be able to use a credit or debit card, and the, I think the initial, if you don't have a bank, I think the idea is to get one of those prepaid debit cards that you can get at the store.
You do have to have a card.
Yes, yeah, it's just like with us with cash handling, it just, it would, it would cost probably more than it's worth than to have people pay with cash, but you should be able to get any prepaid debit card at the store and be able to use it. So if they have the trouble, call VIA, email us. We actually had somebody in the last couple weeks that was having trouble, and my counterparts at VIA called and emailed them directly, you know, so if people have problems, then they should definitely reach out, so, yeah.
Thanks, sir.
All right, any other questions?
For the, so if we're gonna continue this, like, I'll swivel on my chair and look at Mr. Francisco. We currently don't have a budget in FY twenty-five for this, it wasn't an ongoing allocation, so that'll just be something that we'll have to get with his department and look into, so. That needs to be a part of the discussion now, but I just want to put that out there that we, in the current transit budget, we don't have that allocation, so.
That's, that's, that's good.
Yeah.
So I, I think what I'm hearing is possibly move forward with the expansion of service now to the west side of town for what, however many days, we'll try to get on the next council agenda to, to be able to do that. And then explore options with Moore Norman Tech for next year, and it sounds like everybody's in agreement to continue the service for another year.
Yes, sir. Councilmember?
Any thought or discussion about the rate? And it, and it's a flat fee right now.
Right.
Any discussion about it being fluctuating based on the distance or trip or stuff like that? I mean, I still, I'd like it to be affordable, but at the same time, we're, we're having a publicly subsidized entity that's competing with private business outside of the ADA aspect of it.
Right.
So, I don't know, if there's ways to generate more revenue from it or advertising from it, whatever creative ways we can find to pay for it, because I, I think it is a good thing to have, and I think it can complement our bus system, our fixed route system, too, but that cost, the yearly reoccurring cost is a concern, I think we all probably have, so.
Yeah, I think it's probably similar to the bus in that you'll, you'll probably never pay for the service through fares, right?
Right.
With, with On-Demand, you can get creative, and you can say, hey, the first three miles or whatever, one mile is two dollars, the next mile is another dollar, the next mile is another dollar, you could do those types of things. So if council's interested in that, we can ask VIA to explore that option, that'd probably be something that we need to do a lot of marketing to let riders know if we are changing it that way, but that would.
Something we could at least know about.
Right.
Yeah, what it would look like if that, if we didn't do that.
Because it shouldn't emulate a taxi service. What, what you're talking about is a taxi service with the meat, old, used to have meters.
Yeah.
But it's just if you went to a zone, if you're coming in town, say, five miles for the two dollars, going out to Thunderbird for some more money.
Yeah.
But most of the time, there should be an exemption for kids going to school and those kinds of things, those, you know, a lot of this isn't, isn't gonna make any difference to, kids shouldn't be, well, I shouldn't say that. It shouldn't be a, a great ridership of kids coming back from bars who want to go straight to school. But there's, there's gotta be some way we can help pay this, because I think there are wonderful, wonderful things to do, and help the people be able to do stuff. I can speak to Paratrans, they, a friend of mine takes, has a standing appointment, it seems like, she probably calls in, but she gets picked up at church and brought home, and, and, I mean, they're on time, clean, courteous, great bunch, so. And that's my editorial.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I think the Plus system is great, and the fact that we serve the whole city, the only thing about it is, is being the day twenty-four hour advance notice, it seems to be the, I wanna go shopping right now, or I got a thing that I want to get to right now.
And going back to our study sessions about microtransit and the difference and everything, it's just, it's hard to manage a system based on On-Demand. You know, how many drivers do you have sitting around potentially waiting on rides? So I think that's why the twenty-four hour requirement's there, because to make it more cost-efficient, you can just know how many rides you're gonna have the next day, right? So you know how many ride, drivers you need, how many vehicles, you can pull vehicles in for serious maintenance, and not have to worry about, you know, putting another vehicle out there to service the, the system. So I think that's why it's been historically that way, just to be able to manage the, the costs.
Well, you know, we've had some examples where we've had some residents ride Embark Plus to City Hall for a meeting.
Right.
And the meeting ends an hour and a half before they thought, and so they have to wait. Their appointment wasn't scheduled till when they thought it was gonna end, so they're waiting until it gets here. So addressing that is trying, kind of where I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, and similar to somebody, if, if a bus wasn't coming by for another hour, right, it's unfortunate, but.
You've got to wait.
Yeah, you've got to wait.
Thanks, sir.
All right, well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time. Item number two, I guess, is a Brendan discussion on regarding time change for city council meetings?
Okay. Currently, your regular meeting time is at six-thirty, as you know, and that is codified by ordinance. So there was some discussion from some members of council after last meeting, when we started the conference at four and the, and the regular meeting at five-thirty, that they may have some interest in doing that permanently. So if that's the case, it would just be an ordinance amendment to change the time of the regular meeting. The other meetings, the conferences and study sessions and things of that nature, just have to get a new meeting, annual meeting summary reissued, I mean, reposted, so that's not any big deal. It's just a matter of amending that.
Scott, okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna say no, because I work a full-time job that technically is supposed to go until five. I'm already getting out, you know, have leniency to get out a little early. It's, the time it is right now is what I signed up for, when I ran for office, was like, what the expectation was. I also think, like, I understand on the staff side, like, that would be wonderful for city staff, but I'm also thinking about the residents' ability and accessibility to meetings, and then being able to get off work, get their kids from school, maybe have dinner, and then be able to come and listen and speak at meetings. So I think that it's more accessible for our residents at the current time. So I'm personally not interested in moving it.
Councilmember Rich?
I just want to echo what Councilmember Schuler just said, we have full-time jobs, and we signed up to, to run, is with this understanding of when the meetings are and what time we're able to commit to that kind of timeframe. If, if we are to ever change the times of the meetings. If, if we are to ever change the times of the meetings, ideally would, well, I guess it can never happen for the entire changeover at once, but happened, you know, like, before filing so that the people that are filing to run understand that the meetings begin at this time instead of, like, if we're to make some extreme change, for example, at eight o'clock in the morning, that could immediately cut out half the council. Because we have jobs that we have to be at that we can't always just peel away from.
Drew?
Yes, ma'am.
So I too concur with Schuler and Nash. The number one concern I have about it is public engagement. And then two, you know, whenever I decided to run, you know, I was under the impression at the time to be, you know, 6:30 and five and so on, so. And, you know, if, if there's ever discussion on changing in the future, you know, anybody in the future, you know, potentially going to run with plenty of advance notice if that's going to happen, so.
Yes, sir.
I think, is there a way to put this up to the public to see the thing? Because it's not about us. I mean, yes, we were elected to cast our vote, but if it's about public engagement, it's what time is more convenient for people to come. And the majority of people come to speak of miscellaneous comments. And if they're here, sometimes our miscellaneous comments don't start till nine or 10 o'clock at night. And people with families, they don't want to be up here at nine or 10 o'clock at night. And I think that detracts from the public engagement. So, I mean, I, I understand what everybody's saying, trust me, I, I have a kid, I got to pick up the five and, you know, run here. But if it helps our citizens to come and be able to express themselves, I, I don't mind doing it every, so.
Councilmember Foner?
Um, at the meeting that we did at the time, was it the 13th, I guess? We did have some frequent flyer commenters come and they felt like it was being sneaky and intentionally doing it earlier because they have jobs and they can't be here. So I think that public engagement would be worse and lessened because people can't take paid time off and they do have to sign up to speak at the meetings. And if our meeting starts at eight and like, Councilmember Ball said, you know, sometimes comments don't start till nine, I mean, they, they would be here all day, miss a whole day of work potentially, just to get in a comment. So I think we should keep it at the time that it is. I understand it, trust me, I like it in theory. I like getting out early in theory, but...
Yes, sir.
Uh, last time we talked about this, a couple of years ago, some wanted it in the morning, some wanted to keep it the way it was, some wanted 5:30. I kind of suggested, well, we could do it at six. I mean, 30 minutes could be a big difference perhaps. Start this meeting at five, start the council meeting at six. But I haven't seen any real agreement from people on when is a good time to change it, so makes it hard to decide to change it. And I think, Councilmember Ball's point, I mean, one of the ways we could potentially address that is move the miscellaneous comment up, we've talked about that before. Move to our council comments from the end to the front of the meeting, so that could be one way. Because, yeah, I don't, I hate, part of me is like, well, I like that they have to sit through the whole council meeting because they get to see the whole thing. But part of me is like, yeah, I hate that people have to sit through the whole council meeting just to say this one thing that they have and so. But maybe moving that up next to the council comments or after, before, whichever, could be one way to address that. But, yeah, I just don't see a good, real good time to do it that everybody's going to have an objection to any time that we come up with, so I'm kind of just like, keep it the way it's always been, so. But I agree too that, you know, for staff, it could be better and some members of the public, it could be better, some maybe not, so, yeah, just kind of, don't have a real will to change it based off of that.
Yeah. That's what I'm going.
I have to say, as one of the council members with a lot of flexibility, I'm okay with the times that we have. I know when we change it, it's not often and it's rare and we got to let everybody know that, you know, we might have a 2:00 PM budget meeting. But I think for folks that have to get out, especially watching people try and get out for other meetings like Planning Commission, especially if they have small children, you know, the time that they can make comments, being a little later might not be the worst because their kids might be in bed and one parent can sneak off or they can get somebody to come watch while the kids are in bed and come make public comment. So I'm happy with what we're doing now.
Well, in the lead-up to this, as I looked a lot at what other cities did, when they do, and they're much earlier, most of the time during the day. The, my, the other thing is the rarity that we go way past 10 o'clock. We've, we've done, I think, only two that I can think of lately. It's rare. But it would bring up that miscellaneous comments by an hour. And so perhaps we can revisit this in six months to get it looked at again if we want to do the change. Obviously, everybody'd have to change again and before the next election starts up. So nobody, because I'm, I'm like you, I can adjust my schedule as I need to adjust it, but that's not everybody. And so it's just finding a better time. It's difficult, I think, on, on, on staff when you're waiting around and per tap, per, if your item is the last one, you're waiting through a lot of mud to get there. And so there's nothing wrong with that, it's just they've got families too and, and, and doing so. But, yes, ma'am.
Um, I think also maybe a good time to talk about it would be our next council retreat when everybody's sworn, sworn in by then, right?
Yeah.
Uh, so that we could get other new council member feedback.
Yeah. And we can do it then and it'd still be a year or whatever the cycle comes out at that time. Still be a year to do it. Does anybody disagree with that?
Council just confirming that our typical budget adoption process starts at 2:00 PM?
Just for the last two years.
Yeah, so with consensus, we'll continue to agendize it just like that.
That will work.
Thank you.
My only comment about that is that we moved it up and then we got done in like 30 minutes. And so it made, we were like, oh, the city council just moved the most important meeting of the year to the middle of the day because they thought it would go long, because it did a couple of times and then they got done in like 30 minutes because nobody came and spoke. So...
Why, you're darned up to you do.
I know. I tell you, that's what I always say, it's, people complain about the roads if they're in bad condition and they complain about the construction when they're getting fixed, so it's like, no matter what you...
All right. Anybody else want to stay on that? Moving on to the next item is considerate, item number three. Consideration of adjourning into executive session is authorized by Oklahoma statutes, Title 25, 307B4, to discuss pending class action litigation against three M company and EI DuPont de Moore and Company and other defendants involving PFAS contamination or acquiesce film forming foamed products liability litigation. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn out of special session but being into executive session.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of February 27th, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Montoya?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Heikala?
I am here. Would you all please join me in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is approval of minutes. Approval of the City Council Oversight Committee meeting minutes of February 2nd, 2022, City Council Special Meeting Minutes of October 31st, 2023, November 21st, 2023, and December 19th, 2023, and the City Council Finance Committee Meetings of February 15th, 2024. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the minutes.
So moved.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Item number two, presentation of a civilian service medal and certificate to Christie Stubbs for her outstanding performance and teamwork with the Norman Police Department. Chief Foster, will you please present that?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, council members. Christie here? And by chance, do I have Amy here?
She is not here.
Okay. She was gonna try to make. But, okay. This certified that the chief of police has authorized the award of the civilian service medal to Christie Stubbs. October 12th, 2023, Norman Police Department was dispatched to a location in reference to a cardiac arrest. Upon officer's arrival, Christie Stubbs and Benjamin Kirkland, who could not be here today, were performing CPR on an unresponsive female, which was Amy. We called and asked her if we could tell you who she was. She was good, and she was gonna try to be here. Stubbs were performing chest compressions, and Kirkland was giving breaths. Officers confirmed the female patient did not have a pulse. Medical personnel arrived on scene, took over the duties of CPR, and had to shock the patient at least once with the AD. Prior to medics leaving the scene, the patient was breathing on her own and making purposeful movements. If not for the quick thinking Stubbs and Kirkland beginning CPR prior to medics arriving on scene, the female, Amy, most likely would not have survived. For outstanding performance and teamwork with Norman Police Department, Christie Stubbs is hereby awarded the civilian service medal.
There's your certificate and the medal. Congratulations. All right. Item number three, a proclamation proclaiming Monday, April 22nd, 2024 is Earth Day, and March 22nd through May 19th, 2024 is Green Norman Eco Month in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Have a motion. Second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Council members, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been acknowledged, received, passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Monday, April 22nd, 2024 is Earth Day, and March 22nd through May 19th, 2024 is Eco Month in the city of Norman. Whereas Senator Gaylord Nelson created Earth Day to increase environmental awareness and to highlight devastating effects of pollution to our air, water, and soil to the nation, and whereas 22 million Americans celebrated the first Earth Day on April 22nd, 1970. Whereas the city of Norman Parks and Recreation, Utilities, and Public Works Department have planned a series of events to celebrate this important milestone and provide Norman residents with an opportunity to get involved, and whereas Saturday, April 22nd, 2024 marks the 51st anniversary of Earth Day, and whereas Saturday, March 22nd through Sunday, May 19th, is recognized as Green Norman Eco Month with free activities to be held at various locations throughout the city. Whereas Sunday, April 21st, 2024, from noon to 5:00 PM, is the city of Norman's 20th Annual Earth Day Festival to be held at Reeves Park, and whereas we encourage the community to come to be a part of these free public events and learn these new things about the world around us. Now, therefore, I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2024 as Earth Day, and March 22nd through May 19th, 2024 as Green Norman Eco Month in the city of Norman, and encourage our citizens to make a difference in our community, to think, reduce, reuse, recycle, replenish, restore, refresh, replant, rebuild, repurpose, and respect our city. Is Dane Hines and Sarah Bondi here? Would you please come forward?
Sarah, can you make your remarks if you'd like, and I'll come up and give you your award?
Okay. Let me have it.
What's sad is I was sitting in biology class on that first Earth Day, and then I had to say that 54 years ago.
Okay. Distinguished members of the Norman City Council and mayor, honored guests and fellow citizens, I stand before you today deeply honored to accept this proclamation declaring April 22nd, 2024 as Earth Day, and March 22nd through May 19th, 2024 as Green Norman Eco Month. Senator Gaylord Nelson's vision of Earth Day, born from a deep concern for our environment, has blossomed into a global movement, reminding us of our shared responsibility to protect this precious planet. As we celebrate the 54th anniversary of Earth Day, Norman proudly joins the world in this call to action. I offer my sincerest gratitude to the Norman City Council for recognizing the importance of environmental stewardship. This proclamation serves as a powerful testament to our city's commitment to a sustainable future. Our dedicated staff, volunteers, and support organizations deserve immense praise for planning a series of events throughout Green Norman Eco Month, including the upcoming Solar Bulk Purchasing Initiative in partnership with 820, and the Star Wars Day, May the 4th Electronics Waste Collection Event at Reeves Park. These events offer valuable opportunities for our community to learn, engage, and take action. I particularly encourage everyone to attend the 20th Annual Earth Day Festival at Reeves Park on April 21st. It promises to be a vibrant celebration filled with activities, information, and a chance to connect with fellow citizens celebrating our environmental well-being. Let us not underestimate the power of individual actions. By embracing the spirit of rethink, refuse, reduce, reuse, recycle, replenish, restore, refresh, replant, rebuild, repurpose, and respect, each of us can contribute to a healthier and more sustainable Norman. Together, let us embrace our responsibility as stewards of this beautiful earth. Let Green Norman Eco Month be a catalyst for lasting change, inspiring generations to come to cherish and protect our shared environment. Thank you.
Now down to council announcements. I'll start with Ward Eight.
So, thank you. This year, Norman will be one of 16 cities in the strongest town March Madness bracket. Every year, the National Nonprofit Strong Towns honors one community with the distinction of strongest town, and this year, Norman will have the chance to earn that title. Voting starts March 4th, so I hope to see everyone watching, get out and vote for Norman, and to advance to round two and beyond. And I can't just say, highlight how big this is for our city and how much positive PR and press we're gonna get out of this. So please get out there, vote, support our city, and thank you very much.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. Just a couple things. Wanted to note that tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock at the Firehouse Art Center, we've got a mural dedication. So another piece of public art going in for Norman. And then also wanted to note a few things about Reeves Park, which is in Ward Seven. The kids' space playground, I've got some emails about that and seen some comments online. It is 25 years old this year, and it continues to be the most popular playground in all of Norman as far as its use. But there are some issues that it's having due to its age and the fact that it's made out of wood, and it's having some issues with the base, some of the things that are in the ground, parts are breaking off of it. So Park's staff has been working for over a year on, with the company that originally helped us build it back in 1999, on options for how we can replace it, but also preserve it as well. That same theme of playground, may potentially making it larger, but also using materials that will be much more durable and long-lasting and require less maintenance than the current one. So improvements are in the planning for that playground. We hope to continue using it for another 25-plus years and make it even better. So I would just encourage parents to be patient with that as city staff works through that and we identify funding for how we'll go about doing that, whether through, there's at least three more phases of Reeves Park improvements. We've completed Phase One basically with the new baseball fields and the parking and the drive that goes through the middle. But there's a lot more improvements to the park that are on down the road. I also wanted to mention, because I've received a lot of emails about softball, adult softball, and so the adult softball league in Norman is separately run from the city and is through the Optimist Club who runs the fields out there. And so the city government is not really particularly involved in the adult softball program. What I can say is that from my perspective, as a lifelong Norman resident and someone that lives near Reeves Park, I've always loved the adult softball league and have been glad that we have it in Norman and would definitely like to see it continue. But the details of that are in agreement that's between the Adult Softball League of Norman and the Optimist Club. So hopefully they are able to work out the issues that they have and are able to continue the league going for more years to come. Also with Reeves Park, we do have Earth Day festivals coming up, which I'm always excited about hosting at Reeves Park, and Medieval Fair is coming up as well in April. So it's becoming the busy season for Reeves Park, and I'm real excited for everybody to get an opportunity to go out and see some of the improvements we have made, if you haven't, to see the new robot, piece of public art, if you haven't seen that one yet. And again, we will continue making improvements to Reeves Park over the coming years to make it even better. Also wanted to mention the ribbon cutting of the YFAC last week, the Young Family Athletic Center voter-approved project. But we did have a partnership with Norman Regional Hospital and the Young Family, Trey Young Family. And we had the ribbon cutting last week. It officially opens March 11th, and the pools will be done and everything then. But it's already been in use for over a month. It's extremely popular. If any of you have been out there so far, it might be hard to find a place to park. But there, I just want to remind everybody, there is a lot of parking in that general area, specifically to the east of the Embassy Suites Hotel is a very large parking lot that's underused, I'll just say. And then across 24th is another very large parking lot that is vastly And then across 24th is another very large parking lot that is vastly underused. So, just keep that in mind when you're going out there. If you're a family and you can take one car instead of two, like Councilmember Peacock's family, I would recommend that. But it seems to be extremely popular and well-used, which is what we wanted. And Trey Young's father, Ray, last week said they've been all over the country to facilities like that, and they said there is nothing like it in the rest of the United States. So, be sure to go and check that out if you get a chance. Again, it is a voter-approved project. It's the largest dollar amount for any public quality-of-life improvement project I think the city has ever done. And then there's also a large public art piece that's in the front that was also part of the voter-approved 1% for public art that former Councilmember Kyle Allison had added to the Norman Forward proposal back then. So, check that out. And then also, we have another ribbon cutting on March 8th for the new municipal court. And so, this is a project I've been really passionate about for a number of years, partly because the current municipal court shares a small corner of the police department. And it's kind of always been jammed in there with file cabinets in the hallways and stuff like that. And there was just one single small courtroom for the whole city, for adults and juveniles. And if you ever had to go deal with a municipal court issue there, you would know that the lobby is extremely small, definitely not big enough for a city this size. And so, our new municipal court, which is across the way over here in the Building A, which used to be the home of public works and planning and code enforcement, a whole bunch of different city departments were under that one roof. Now, that entire building is our new municipal court. It not only has a regular courtroom for, I guess, adult issues, but it has a dedicated juvenile courtroom as well. So, I'm very excited to see that. That is another voter-approved project for the municipal complex, going back to 2008. So, March 8th at 3:00 PM, if you can attend that, I would definitely encourage you to come see that. And then the last thing I want to talk about was the community planning and transportation. We had our committee meeting last Thursday. It's the fourth Thursday of every month at 4:00 PM here at City Hall. It is live-streamed on YouTube, and you can go back and watch any of the meetings after they've happened as well. But in that committee, we get an update from city staff every month about the public transit system, about the budget for it, about projects, expansions of it. We try to answer any questions or comments that the public may send us or that we may hear or see online throughout the month. So, if you are a rider of the public transit system, or if you just have an interest in knowing more about it, I would definitely encourage you to check out that meeting. We have been seeing significant growth in ridership month-to-month since we took over the system in 2019, and especially since, I say after COVID, it's kind of still going on, but since the height of COVID has gone down, we've seen more and more people using public transit to get to work and to go shopping and go to appointments and things like that. We also talked about this past week about the citywide sidewalk program, about funding for sidewalks in Norman. That's one of the most common questions I think we all get is about sidewalk gaps or the condition of sidewalks or ADA accessibility. And I just want to make sure you all know, we do have a sidewalk plan for the city. We do have an ADA plan that aims to address all the ADA deficiencies we have in the City of Norman when it comes to pedestrian mobility. And if that's a topic you're interested, I would definitely encourage you to check out the meeting that we had this past Thursday. And then we also discuss major road construction projects as well. So, if you're wondering about the Robinson and James Garner Underpass and the Bridge, we get updates from city staff about ongoing city projects, road construction that may impact your travel daily, or it may just be something you're interested in knowing more about. So, if those things are things you would like to know more about, or if you have comments or suggestions or ideas for us in regard to transportation stuff, please let any of us know on council, and we'll be sure that we discuss those in that committee meeting, Community Planning and Transportation. Thank you.
That's Member Ford.
I don't know if there's anything left to say. That's a tough act to follow. Take more sips. Okay. So, according to my nine-year-old, our meetings can be sort of boring to her. But there is one item I do want to draw your attention to tonight. It's item number 25. It's something specific to Ward 6. It's actually a public hearing, and I asked our city attorney, and this is actually something unpressed attended, that council has never had to do before. There's a public nuisance property and circumstance, you will hear the presentation on that. But this will be something that we will be considering for the first time. And so, a lot of people will say, how does local government really affect our life? Well, we actually can impact quality of life and intervene on certain things like that. So, pay a particular interest to this item. That's all. Thank you.
That's Member Nash.
No announcements this week. Thank you.
That's Member Wright.
Good evening, Ward 4 in City of Norman. This is the last week of Black History Month here in our multiracial city, where ostensibly all of us are working towards building an inclusive community. As I think about our collective histories and struggles and how they last all year, I'm reminded of land acknowledgements and the reasons for doing them. The one I use for our city goes like this. Norman is located on Caddo, Wichita, Apache, Absentishawnee, Kiowa, Kikapu, and Osage lands. Thirty-nine tribal nations dwell in the state of Oklahoma as a result of settler colonial policies designed to assimilate all native peoples. Norman, Oklahoma was also a sundown town until 1967. The land we occupy has complicated histories, and I wish to acknowledge that. Speaking of having our own spin, I went to the rescheduled 2024 Interfaith Breakfast on Saturday, February 17th. I left that event hopeful that we'll see at least one action item mentioned come to fruition, as it is 100% something all nine of us on city council can affect, and that is supporting the work that comes from our Human Rights Commission. How do we do that? Well, we appoint commissioners, listen to the recommendations that come from that commission, and then work towards implementing them. We heard from Interfaith Breakfast organizers and speakers that we need volunteers to step up and serve on our Human Rights Commission. They also mentioned OKC restarted its defunct HRC. These times demand action. If you're interested, please go to normanok.gov, navigate to Your Government, then navigate to Boards and Commissions. Once there, you should find a link to the online application. It's not listed, but as I understand it, there are three vacancies on the Human Rights Commission. You cannot be related to anyone on city council, you cannot be a city employee, and you must live within Norman city limits to be eligible to serve. You can also come to City Hall and apply in person through the city clerk's office. We keep applications on file for two years. If you live in Ward 4 or a member of a marginalized community living full-time in Norman, I invite you to connect with me by email, norman@, or sorry, ward4@normanok.gov, or text 405-876-9237 about what it takes to serve on a board or commission, especially as a minority. I've served on several over the years, and while it is a time commitment, your voice has the potential to go a lot further than you think. It is here that I'd like to acknowledge the Norman Community Candlelight Vigil for Next Benedict that took place Saturday, February 24th, at Andrews Park. I want to thank the City of Norman Parks and Recreation for the role they played in that event being successful and to say that this event went a long ways towards building an inclusive community. There were a minimum of 60 to 70 people in attendance, potentially more, as I saw the crowd grow by nightfall. It meant people from all over Norman and others from smaller surrounding communities who also supported what we were doing both honor and mourn this young, non-binary kid from Owasso, Oklahoma. Next Benedict should still be with us today, and not just alive, but thriving. Survival is not enough. Learn their name, Next Benedict, and know that they were a trans teen working their way to using he/him pronouns, that they were Choctaw and learning more about their family history, and that he died before he could grow into the person he was meant to be. Scapegoating queer kids to grift off the fear and hate that other people have will never make America great. I started tonight's announcement reflecting on Black History Month. Originally, before all this started, during, between last meeting and this one, I wanted to reflect on African-American artists that inspired me, however, real life interrupted. But as Toni Morrison said, this is precisely the time when artists go to work. There is no time for despair, no place for self-pity, no need for silence, no room for fear. We speak, we write, we do language. That is how civilizations heal. Well, yes, we, as a community of artists, organizations, families, friends, elected officials, and others, did our best with that at the Candlelight Vigil for Next Benedict. I plan to join the OU Indigenous Student-Led Walkout at 12:00 PM tomorrow, Wednesday, February 28th. The March for Life, March for Rights, March for Next Benedict starts at the Seed Sower Statue on the South Oval, still Ward 4, marches past the Cleveland County Courthouse, and ends at Andrews Park. When I think about the impermanence of all things, certainly an existential thought had by many for eons, I'm reminded of what little we do get to hold on to and how that experience and connection shapes our brief time on this planet. So, in the vein of connection, blackness, queerness, and family, I want to circle back briefly to highlight the life of an artist I found impactful, Jackie Shane, who was born in Nashville, Tennessee, May 14th, 1940. I found her music because I was crate dealing at a numero group records Oklahoma City pop-up in 2017. I learned early in her life, her mother was very supportive, lending clothes and makeup when Jackie came out as trans at 13. However, watching a racially motivated hate crime occur in her home state, Tennessee, she relocated to Toronto, Canada. In Canada, Jackie would come to define her sound, rhythm, and blues times rock and roll. She was a regular at the Sapphire Tavern, and although she enjoyed success, in 1996, she moved to LA to take care of her mother. Retired from music when her mother passed, Jackie moved back to Nashville. There was a renewed interest in her body of work before Jackie passed away in 2019 at the age of 78. On her life and career, Jackie Shane told the Canadian Broadcasting Company, "I really feel that I have made a place for myself with wonderful people. What I have said, what I have done, they say it makes their lives better." When I think about connection, that's in the heart of it, isn't it? You know, the heat death of the sun might render this all into cosmic dust, and there's no record, no building left of what we've done, but we'll always have had our connection to one another and the meaning we collectively create from the chaos. As someone who's just come off a reelection won by a landslide, which required a lot of door-knocking and porch chats, let's be real, making policy choices that results in family suffering is neither pro-family nor pro-community. I have heard stories from multiple families in Ward 4 of friends and family, but especially adult trans family and friends leaving Oklahoma. In case my election this month wasn't loud enough, Ward 4 as a majority doesn't care about respectability politics. The people in this ward care about the future, from environmental sustainability, effective and efficient city services, all the way to what's going to happen to the quality of our lives as more of our children, siblings, and other family and friends choose to move away. They care about what that means as time and distance strain their connections, connections that should have been protected and nurtured. And the majority in Ward 4 care about the people who can't leave, too. I don't think this sentiment is unique to Ward 4, but let me tell you, as I connect with Ward 4 families in the core and in the newly reapportioned areas, they aren't looking for groups to be scapegoated. They're looking for policy and a plan of action that makes sense and gets to the root of systemic issues. Their patience is thin for grifters who want to siphon off money, resources, and power, all while having nothing substantive to offer our community. Speaking of actual community, our second Friday artwork takes place on March 8th. Contrary to the rancid echo chambers you'll find online, I expect to see, weather permitting, well-attended and happening art events amid a plethora of shopping and dining options in the Walker Arts District, aka Downtown Norman. Shopping and dining locally supports your community and your city. As mentioned by Councilmember Holman, there is a ribbon cutting at the municipal court, also located in Ward 4. I want to say that the highlight reel that I watched on Instagram was a nice preview, and I appreciate that. And if you can't make it, maybe navigate over there and take a look for yourself. Last, there is a new AIM Norman question about parks, recreation, and open space that was recently posted. Please go to aimnorman.com to participate, and while you're there, check out the schedule for community workshop opportunities running from now till March 14th. Thank you.
Councilmember Montoya.
Good evening, Norman, Oklahoma, and Ward 3. I hope this evening finds you all well. First, a message to the citizens of Norman that are members of a marginalized community. I hear you, and I see you, and I care about you, and you matter. And if there's ever a time that you don't think you matter, call me or text me, and we can talk about it, and I'll tell you why you matter. My phone number is 405-876-3143. Calendar items. So, a week from today, we have a special election on our 25-year OG&E franchise agreement. Please make sure to make a plan to vote and go see your poll workers. Then, April 2nd is the Norman Public School Board Seat 4 election. And Ward 3, March 11th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at Truman Elementary, located at 600 Parkside Road, is an AIM pop-up shop. So, that is our master plan with our land use plan, water, and so on. So, you have an opportunity to provide your input on how we shape the next 20 years of our town. And lastly, holding a town hall has been on my mind for quite some time. It's a matter of scheduling, finding the right time, location, and so on. So, it is on my mind, and I do hope to get one scheduled for the month of April. Thank you all for being here, and have a good evening.
Councilmember Shute.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. I was also going to talk about Super Tuesday, which is next Tuesday, March 5th. We have a, on the ballot is the OG&E franchise agreement as well as the presidential primary preference. So, early voting will start this week, Thursday and Friday, 8 to 6:00 PM. And then, since it is a federal election, they will also have Saturday, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM available. I will also draw your attention to April 2nd, which is the runoff for the Ward 2 election that will be going on. So, Ward 2, you will have an election on April 2nd. And then, that is it for me.
That's Member Ball.
All right. First and foremost, and most importantly, today's my wife's birthday, so I'd like to wish her a very happy birthday, and just to say thank you to her and my family and pretty much all of our families for the sacrifices they make that allow us to be here and to do what we do. So, next, about two weeks ago, the City of Norman assisted a private property owner in the removal of a homeless encampment. Myself, along with a few of the other councilors here, we're out there, and I took the opportunity to see the effects this encampment had on the property, the surrounding properties, and to meet some of the individuals being removed, as well as members of our COC. I recorded the entire time I was out there. And I shared two videos in particular with everybody here. I shared it on my Facebook account, and I shared it with pretty much every department head we have here in the city. The first video I shared was with an individual who was homeless and who was being removed. He told me that he was a drug abuser, and this was the primary reason why he was there. He told me he didn't want help. I asked him what I could do. I said, if I get you to rehab right now, would you do it? And he said, hell, no. He said, I like being here. I like doing what I'm doing. We're out here because we want people to leave us alone. And it goes for 99% of the people there. Now, if that's true, I don't know. But that's what he told me about himself. So, what's more compassionate, allowing these people to slowly commit suicide through drug abuse, mental illness, and exposure, or to force these people to get help? If someone was about to jump off the Physical Science Center at OU, we'd have 100 cop cars there, and we'd do everything we could to save that person's life. But because somebody's slowly committing suicide with drug abuse, we just turn our backs on them. But I guess when there's so many people here profiting both financially and politically from the suffering of our least fortunate, then instead of just letting them remain where they are, and in my opinion, that's an absolute disgrace. And when, not if, one of these people succumbs to this lifestyle and lose their lives, I don't think we need to look any further than the people up here on this dais and the people who work for the city and that are sitting in this room on who to hold accountable. Now, the second video I shared kind of proves this point. Now, the second video I shared kind of proves this point. I talked to a group of individuals who claimed to be members of our continuum of care. They said they worked for a friend's house, Norman Caravans, and food and shelter, to be exact. These individuals claimed that they couldn't do poop to keep it family-friendly. They claimed, well, I asked them what they needed. I said, "What do you guys need in order to get these people help?" And you know what it was? They need more of your taxpayer dollars, because they can't do anything, their admission with what they have, but they want more from you to continue failing us and those people out there. I don't know. It's an absolute disgrace. Now, for those of you who saw the videos, are these the people we want working for our continuum of care? Their behavior was an absolute disgrace, and if this behavior is a general attitude of our continuum of care, then it's pretty obvious to see why our homeless population keeps increasing here in Norman. So why keep wasting money on these programs when those who run the programs admit they can't do anything and want more money to continue failing? Now, I sent, like I said, these videos to every department head, and I asked them. I didn't even get an email back to verify if these people were part of our continuum of care. I didn't get a single email back. Nobody has any answers. So maybe, I mean, I've talked to some of our department heads one-on-one and asked them what we can do, and I've looked outside the box, because obviously what we have right now isn't working, but we need ideas. We have a vote tonight that can actually help and give some of these people a place to go. So hopefully, we do the right thing on that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor has none. Next item is consent docket. This item is placed on the agendas of the city council by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Item 4 through Item 24 be placed on the consent docket. I'll entertain a mo-
Second.
Thanks. A motion and second on approving Items 4 through 24. I also need a motion and a second to place them on. No.
I'm sorry.
You didn't talk louder.
This motion is to place them on the consent.
Right.
And then we'll get a new one to approve them. So the motion on 4 is to place Items 4 through 24.
Motion on 4 is to place Items 4 through 24 on the agenda.
So move.
Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast. Items 4 through 24 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I need a motion to approve Items 4, the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been approved. The consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience, Stu. Item number 25, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, conducting and closing a public hearing to determine the appropriate action for abatement or condemnation of 3104 Woodcrest Creek Drive as a public nuisance and order city services to be disconnected for a period of six months. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. A motion and second. Motion on the floor is to open the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
We're just opening the hearing.
We're opening the meeting.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to open the hearing passes unanimously. The public hearing is now open.
Recognize Jeanne Snyder, Assistant City Attorney, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, rice don't go anywhere. You know, I can mess up these things pretty darn quick. This is a public hearing to determine, as the mayor just stated-
Jeanne, Jeanne, can you pull your mic down closer?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. As the mayor just read, this is a public hearing to determine the appropriate action for abatement or condemnation of 3104 Woodcrest Creek Drive as a public nuisance and order city services be disconnected for a period of six months. This is a single-family residence at 3104 Woodcrest Creek Drive. It was purchased by Eric Scott Hudson in February of '21 for $188,000. He's got a mortgage on that property with Veterans United Home Loan, and the property has a tax-exempt financing rider. I'm not going to go into, right now, all the details that have been happening on that. The Norman Police Department is going to join me in this presentation tonight, but there's been at least over 60 calls for service since the purchase of property. Most of them have come in the last two years. There's illegal drug activity, disturbances involving weapons, shots fired, harassments, threats, suicide attempts, and a fentanyl overdose at one time, and neighbors feel extremely unsafe. Mr. Hudson currently has a case at District Court in Cleveland County for maintaining a dwelling purposes for the purpose of narcotics. That was filed in September. It's been continued a number of times because he has stated to the court that he wanted to get an attorney, and he's not done that yet. A resident of the property, Daniel Owens, and you'll hear more about him from the Norman Police Department, he also has a number of district court charges and municipal court charges for things such as aggravated assault. There's a third resident there that had been a resident of a local assisted living center who was evicted from that living center for the use of meth. The police department is going to go over that. They've done an excellent, excellent job of the investigation of this over the last two years. They spent quite a bit of time with the neighbors regarding this property. But what brings us here and what gives us the authority to be here tonight is Section And that outlines how to declare a property of public nuisance. I may be stumbling just a tad about this. I've been here almost 24 years. We've had this happen one time in the past, in 2013, and that never went through completion because that property ended up being sold. So this is not something we do often. It's something that we take very serious. It's unique, but at this time, with everything that's happened at this property, the city staff felt this was our only option, was to come to city council and ask you to declare the public nuisance. The ordinance states that a nuisance property means a location-zoned residential where the occupants, or invitees, or owners, or other persons utilize the property in a manner which shall annoy, injure, or endanger the safety, health, comfort, or repose of any considerable number of persons, shall offend the public decency, or shall in any way render any considerable number of persons insecure in life or use of property. Bingo. This is that property. It goes on to say that it can be determined to be a nuisance property if within a 365-day period on three different dates citations resulted in guilty or no contest. We met that burden with Mr. Hudson. He, in three different chapters, in October, he was cited for a health violation, another violation later in October. He was operating and advertising a short-term rental without a license. He pled no contest to all those three violations. Mr. Owens, one of the resident, also has three disturbing the peace charges pending. He was charged with another disturbing the peace in September of '23 and entered in no contest, pleaded that in October of 2004. These charges, just those alone, clearly meet the requirements of the nuisance property as stated. The ordinance goes on to authorize for the city to hold a public hearing, which we are doing tonight, and upon a majority of vote by the council, you can determine if it's going to be a public nuisance and to disconnect city services for a period of six months. Then we will deem it uninhabitable. And I stated in the staff report what uninhabitable is. It's just a structure unfit for human occupancy because it doesn't have the property utilities attached. The city, we've worked well together with legal, the police department, and code. We have met a number of times about this property when we decided to take this direction. And on February 16th, a notice was sent to the property owner. A notice was posted on the property by the Norman Police Department. We also sent a notice to the mortgage holder, so they would know what was going on with this property. I'm going to let, I'm going to turn this over to Major Chad Vincent of the Norman Police Department, and he's going to introduce one of the officers who has done a tremendous amount of work, and excellent work, and go through more of the particular things that they had found in their investigation.
Good evening, council. My name's Chad Vincent with the Police Department. I'm the major of our Community and Staff Services Bureau. Just as Ms. Jeanne said, we're here tonight really to capture and share the work that's been done in the neighborhood. This is probably the point where I would come up and share what we've done specifically from the police department standpoint, but as you mentioned, we have two exceptional officers that have done a tremendous amount of work in this neighborhood, really to restore peace and try to bring order. And instead of me trying to relay the work that they have done, but they've done a tremendous job, I thought it was best that we just bring them up and let them share the work that they've done in this neighborhood. So we're going to bring up Master Police Officer Ben Gomez and Sergeant Chris Allison, and then they're going to share the work and what our involvement and what our experience over the last 10 or 12 months looks like. So I'll turn it over to Officer Gomez and Sergeant Allison.
That's okay. Good evening, council. Just to recap what Ms. Snyder said, I'm Officer Gomez. I've been the primary officer investigating this address and trying to address the issues that have arisen at 3104 Woodcrest Creek Drive. This is my partner Sergeant Allison, and he's been there for the majority of this as well, and we're going to go over some of the details of the cases we've worked. The main complaints with this house, as you can see, the illegal drug use, namely meth and fentanyl, the amount of foot, vehicle, bicycle traffic to and from the house, day and night. There's been disturbances involving weapons, multiple health and safety code violations. There's two companies being operated out of the house. One's a landscaping company. One is a bicycle sale, repair, chop shop, however you want to describe it, operating an Airbnb without a license, and then just some really erratic and violent behavior from individuals inside the residence. Some of the concerns that have been expressed to me by multiple neighbors in this neighborhood, I've been flagged down numerous times, received emails, phone calls from the neighbors talking about how unsafe they felt because of this one particular address. You'll see on the map, this address lies directly across from Vineyard Park. Residents have told me that they found needles in the park, signs of encampments there. We've walked the back creek behind this address, as well as the park. I haven't seen any, like, well-established encampments in these areas. Little bit of trash, signs that maybe somebody spent a night there, but nothing that's grown out of proportion to some of the other areas we've seen. I've had people tell me they don't feel safe, though, taking their kids to the park just because they don't know who's going to be in the area at any given time, what state of mind they're going to be in, and it's sad that they don't feel safe using that park. They've sought help from us. We've made numerous arrests, upwards of 15, 16 people over the last year from this address, and it's very clear that we cannot eliminate this problem just by arresting it away. So Jeanne Snyder went over both of these. To our knowledge, the three current occupants of this house are the homeowner, Eric Hudson, who currently has a district court case in Cleveland County for maintaining a dwelling for the use of narcotics. Another individual, Daniel Owens, who is operating the Turf Man Landscaping Company and the bicycle shop out of the house with Eric. He has an officer safety alert on him due to past incidents with the Norman Police Department. He has two cases currently pending in Cleveland County for two separate assaults and batteries on different days. He's a guy that I've had numerous encounters with, both good and bad. We've had very civil conversations, and we have worked really hard to establish rapport with him to keep situations from escalating. So there's been times when he's done exactly what he's supposed to, times when he hasn't, and we've done our best to really navigate that. The last person is an older female. We had a case back in, or I think June of '23, where staff at a assisted living center here in Norman found drugs in her room, meth and marijuana. She went to the hospital, and she was subsequently removed from that facility. She made her way to, got connected with Eric Hudson, has been living with him. We have made an APS referral for her. We went out with APS to do a welfare check on her, and through their investigation, they found that she was culpable in the living situation at that address. A big concern from the residents in particular is Daniel Owens' history. You can do a Google search and find his criminal history down in Texas, multiple interactions with law enforcement there in Bear County. With us, we've had the SWAT team activated on him at a past address here in Norman. It's kind of hard to see with all the lights on, but traditionally, typically when we encounter Daniel, he's wearing tactical body armor. He has retractable baton or an ASP and mace on his vest. He has retreated into his house to get dressed in that attire and come back outside just to talk to me. So he makes a point to wear this when we encounter him, which just naturally escalates our, you know, yeah, concern when we contact him. Have never had to use force on him. Like I said, we have worked extremely hard to build rapport with this individual. On two occasions when he has had warrants, he has turned himself into me, and I have driven him to jail in and out of handcuffs. So it's just unpredictable what state of mind you're going to be with him. I've also had screaming matches at the front door where we're trying to get inside to check on somebody, and we're unable to do so because he was preventing us from getting inside. These are the two businesses that are being operated out of the house. The first is the Turf Man Landscaping Company. You can find rolls of turf rolled up in the driveway alongside of the house and then up against the wood line in the creek, just to the north of this address. The other is called Anya Bike Shop, which I think they started in December. I found this advertisement online, listing Eric Hudson as one of the operators, and his address as the location of the business. And then from Daniel Owens' Facebook account under Thaddeus Tyrone Clark, he posted a picture of a letter from the IRS to 3104 Woodcrest Creek Drive. These are also posts from Daniel Owens' Facebook account, advertising his holiday bike sale. That's from the inside of the garage at 3104 Woodcrest Creek Drive. The individual you see there working on a bike, we arrested in early 2023 for possession of methamphetamine on a traffic stop. He was with a female at that time, who was also arrested for trafficking CDS when we found 50 grams of meth inside her person. As we went over earlier, there've been 59 calls for service at this address directly. Many disturbances, some are contact to subjects, which would be officer-initiated if we saw somebody at this address, went to talk to them. But you have disturbances, suspicious people, found items, welfare checks, alarms, noise complaints, and all but two of these have been since Eric Hudson has owned the house. So prior to his ownership, there were only two calls for service at this address. These calls do not account for calls that populate at a nearby location that are associated with this address. So these are specifically ones that either we are dispatched to this house or we contact someone at the house. So say, for instance, a car left the residence. We conducted a traffic stop at 12th and Rock Creek. That call would be built under that location. So there's more people that we've contacted leaving the house that just don't show when we search the address. To give you kind of the backstory of how we learned about this address and how it came about, we started by investigating a series of porch piracy incidents in that neighborhood. This individual, the male, was caught on a Ring doorbell cam and by a person on cell phones stealing packages. We located his car parked in the driveway of 3104 Woodcrest Creek. While watching that house, we observed him leave in that car. Sergeant Allison conducted a traffic stop. Sergeant Allison conducted a traffic stop. He had felony warrants, lied to us about his name. Once we figured out who he was, he was arrested. We found methamphetamine and paraphernalia inside the car at that date and time. He was charged with that as well. And then the female passenger with him also received a docket for paraphernalia. He also confessed to stealing the packages in the neighborhood, told us where he pawned them, and I think we were able to follow up and close out some of those cases. That was April 17th of 2023. On May 1st, that same female overdosed on fentanyl inside the address. Sergeant Allison responded to that scene as well. She was transported out of the house, and he obtained consent to go inside. During our search of the residence, we found methamphetamine, signs of fentanyl, tin foil, digital scales, used syringes, just strewn about the house. These are some more pictures of that, just uncapped syringes, baggies with residue, baggies with methamphetamine, obvious signs of drug use in the house. On May 3rd, the individual on top there goes by the street name Monster. We have a plethora of contact history with him here in Norman. He's known to use methamphetamine. He had an apartment here in Norman over the last few years that was similar to Eric's house. Tons of foot traffic, believe he was selling drugs. There were rumors that he was also trafficking unhoused women in and out of his apartment. We've had numerous people report that. We're unable to corroborate it or have anyone come forward to us and any victims willing to speak with us about it, but have arrested him on numerous occasions. The three individuals on the bottom, we stopped on a traffic stop leaving that house on July 31st. They had pulled into the driveway, observed my car, immediately turned around and drove away. The driver of that car was not charged with anything, but told us that he had just been released from prison from another state. The female passenger there had prior criminal history, lots of drug charges, including a DUID. She had drugs stuffed in her shirt at that time and was cited for paraphernalia that day as well. The third individual on the far right, it's hard to see with the lights on, had the most history. He had been seen on Ring doorbell cam coming to and from the house on a bicycle, approaching the next-door neighbor's house, apparently by mistake. So I know he had been at Eric Hudson's house prior to this stop. So when they tried to tell me they were lost and turned around in a random address, we knew that was not the case. So his charges, you can read manufacturing CDS, larceny of auto, bail jumping, burglary, long list of crimes there. While we were stopped with those individuals, we wrote the second, or the female and the second male dockets, a car passed by us with three individuals. One of them was Daniel. There were two other males. One of them was this gentleman on top. He had municipal warrants. We've had history with him, recognized him. So we went back to the house and arrested him for the municipal warrant. August 21st, we contacted the gentleman on the bottom riding away from the house on a bicycle. We've encountered him numerous times in Norman, never this far north, at any address in this neighborhood. Admitted that that's the house he came from. He had 10 municipal warrants that day. So we arrested him, transported him to municipal court, left him with the bike. He was released from municipal court, and another individual recognized him. The bike turned out to be that individual's stolen bicycle. So that individual assaulted him, and he received dockets for an assault over this stolen bicycle. August 23rd, we stopped this car leaving the address. I recognized the passenger, who was the gentleman on the left. He had three municipal warrants, lots of criminal history with us as well. The driver is pictured on the right. He, we called a K-9 to the traffic stop. The K-9 alerted to the odor of narcotics. We conducted a search of the vehicle. Sergeant Allison located methamphetamine in the driver floorboard, and there was a .22 revolver that was loaded and cocked stuffed under the front seat. He's a prior felon and not allowed to have a firearm, so we charged him with that as well. And he currently has a warrant out for his arrest for that as well. On August 28th, we stopped this vehicle leaving the house. The gentleman on the right is a notorious drug dealer here in Norman. Low-level deals mostly to our unhoused population. We have arrested him numerous times for possession of CDS, possession of CDS with intent. We have served a search warrant on his cell phone and found evidence of drug sales occurring at his residence and exactly how he was doing it. We arrested him on January 30th of this month, I believe. And he had gram, or methamphetamine with him in his apartment on his bedside table in plain view that day. His driver that day was the gentleman on the left, who did not have any criminal history that I could see. However, a K-9 alerted to the odor of narcotics on a vehicle that day as well. And we found methamphetamine and paraphernalia in a compartment near the driver's seat of that car. So he was charged with that. I also stopped him leaving a separate address where we believe similar activities occurring on the 17th of January of this year. Two more on September 12th. These two individuals, who we've contacted at 3104 Woodcrest Creek Drive numerous times, left together on bicycles. We knew that each of them had warrants. They observed Sergeant Allison and tried to avoid us by riding their bikes through a field. Sergeant Allison was able to apprehend the woman on the right. I was able to catch up to the woman on the left and arrest them for their respective warrants. Recently, February 1st of, so this month, we got a call of two individuals walking the neighborhood streets, looking into cars. They approached the front door of 3104 Woodcrest Creek. The gentleman on the left picked up a broom, and they walked into Vineyard Park. When Officer, or Sergeant Allison, sorry, attempted to contact them, the gentleman on the right took off running, and I was able to apprehend him, probably two blocks south in the neighborhood. He had municipal warrants. He has extensive history. And then Sergeant Allison arrested the, and other officers arrested the gentleman on the left for Cleveland County warrants. In the midst of all that, so August 30th, this is where the maintaining dwelling charge, when I fight, when I was able to file this charge. We stopped Eric Hudson on a traffic stop. During that stop, we located paraphernalia in his, in his belongings. I was able to have a conversation with Eric just about the activity that we'd seen at that address up to this point and express our concerns. He voiced some of the same concerns for that address and admitted that it had gotten out of control. Part of it, he blamed on other people that were living there, some of it he took responsibility for himself. I asked him what we could do to address the issues at his house, and if there was a way he needed to evict certain people to improve the conditions there. He hesitated, but said that, no, it was fine, and he could take care of it. During that conversation, he gave consent for us to go in. He admitted that there was still drugs inside of his house, gave us consent to go in and check on the condition of the house and remove what little bit of drugs he had. So we made entry that day. This is a screenshot of my body cam from inside the house. And as you can see, these are uncapped syringes that were not in the box when I initially walked through, but collected as we went through the house. So the lights are kinda glaring it, but inside the living room, multiple bicycles. Nice picture of the bedroom, where we found the drugs on the table. This box of syringes were in the closet. And when I, when I talk about just safety concerns, walking through that place is dangerous. And these were, several of them were on the table, on the floor, on beds, uncapped, laid in the open, obviously used. Eric told me that he buys them in bulk and passes out clean syringes to friends, so they have a safe place to use and a clean method of using drugs. This is screenshots from the attic, which was in the process of being converted into an extra room. And then once again, just the box with not, probably not all the paraphernalia in the house, but everything that I could locate nearing my walk-through. Additional police calls for service, you should play. So this, this is a disturbance. There's a woman out front of 3104 Woodcrest Creek involving a disturbance with Daniel Owens. She was screaming, acting belligerent in the street. He livestreamed it to his face at the same time a neighbor was recording her from a different angle. She's yelling out racial expletives directed at Daniel. He's pretty calm in the video, but recorded her and asked her to leave the property. I went back later that day to attempt to find her and trespass her, arrest her, take her to the hospital, whatever she needed, and was unable to locate her when I followed up. This is body cam footage from a disturbance on October 22nd.
How's it going? So what happened?
They were getting shot at by BBs.
It would have been my house, basically. Me and my ex are in the process of separating. I'd been over there the last four.
So it was a BB gun?
It was, it's an airsoft.
Rubber pellets, I guess, and shooting.
Officer, it was an airsoft gun. It wasn't an actual AR.
But I, I have video.
Okay, I need everybody's IDs in the.
So officers responded to a shots fired car, a call there at the address. At the time, they were, did not know exactly what they were walking into, but it was a disturbance at that address where Daniel Owens had come outside and assaulted three individuals with a AR-15-style airsoft gun. He's, this is what one of his current cases in Cleveland County is pending from. Additional police calls, November 1st. The two individuals pictured here were actually contacted, I think, three days before on a search warrant, served at a separate location where we suspected fentanyl of being used. They were both convicted in 2020 of unlawful removal of a body after an acquaintance of theirs overdosed on heroin, and they helped dispose of it into a dumpster. She's recent, he's recently out of prison. Both of them had stayed at 3104 Woodcrest Creek Drive. There was some sort of falling out. The male went to the address that day and was allegedly assaulted by Daniel with a baton. It's hard to see, but there's blood running down his face. He declined to press charges and was uncooperative with law enforcement, so no charges stem from this. But the incident was documented as well. This is a disturbance I responded to on November 8th. This was a woman who was barricaded inside the address. It was Daniel Owens' girlfriend at the time. When I'm trying, this is one of the incidents I spoke of when I was trying to get inside to check on her. We had a relative of hers calling saying she was barricaded inside and was unable to get out. As I tried to go in the front door, we were in a yelling match, and Daniel was preventing me from going in. But you'll see, she was able to escape out a front window, and we were able to get her in a car and drive her to a safe location.
Yes, I am, sir. Nothing happened to her. We told her to get the fuck out.
What are you doing? Stop. Sit down. Sit the fuck down. Sit down.
My son's the one that called for me. I was just trying to get up on my boat because he's scaring me. Because he's telling me to unlock the door, unlock the door, and I'm like, there's.
So this same female, the picture of the two women on bicycles that we arrested earlier, that day when we arrested them, they told us of a girl and provided a name inside the house who they allege was assaulted by Daniel Owens. We, they said that she was badly bruised, and we probably should go check on her. So after we dropped them off, we went back to the house and attempted to conduct a welfare check on this woman. Didn't know who she was at the time, had never seen her. All we had was a first name, didn't even know how to spell it. But we made contact with Eric that day and asked him if she was home. He went back to the bedroom and reemerged at the front door a short time after. Told us she was not there. On this day when I contacted her, she told me that she was at the house and that Eric told her not to come out of the room. So we were able to talk with her that day and remove her from that situation and send her with her family. We asked her about drug use at the house, and she also admitted to being an addict and said that the drug activity at that house never stops, and that's probably the most she's ever used in her life is when she's lived at that address. These are definitely not all the Ring doorbell footage that I've seen over the past year, but captures, I think, kinda what the neighbors are seeing on a regular basis. These are from the neighborhood directly to the south. And when we talk about foot traffic to and from the house, bicycle traffic, people constantly walking in the yards, through the driveway, coming up to the front door. The bottom right, you have a male on a bicycle riding to the house, carrying another bicycle. Daniel claims that it's a legitimate business, and he has receipts for all his things. Eric has told me that people show up with bicycles out of the blue. This one's hard to see, but zoomed in, we had calls about a male carrying a machete down the neighborhood street. And this is one of Daniel Owens wearing his signature tactical vest, walking the streets. So municipal citations that have been issued, health violations, nuisance violations, animal violations, the short-term rental license violation. Daniel Owens has reserved, or has been issued disturbing the peace tickets, interference dockets on multiple different occasions as well. So just, it's not simply a drug issue or a noise complaint or a foot traffic issue. It's a combination of everything that we've experienced here at this address and the amount of time and resources we've spent responding to the various calls at this address is what's gotten us this far. So we ask, do you guys consider this motion for abatement?
Any questions from counsel regarding this incident? There are none.
Thank you.
Thank you, officer. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak. Mr. Hudson, you mentioned that you wanted to speak? Yep, you can get up and talk, right there.
I'll stay right here.
No, sir, you have to be up there so it's recorded.
My name is Eric Hudson, the alleged public nuisance. So y'all had two years to put together all of this grand report, and I was given five business days to rebut. So I'm asking for an extension. I don't have, I haven't even retained an attorney yet, because I was given five business days. Y'all had two years, and you guys give me five business days? So I'm formally requesting an extension.
Thank you, sir. Are there anybody signed up to speak?
We'll start with Terrence Whitten.
My name is Terrence Whitten. I'm sure you guys are aware of my name, all the emails and videos you get. I live in Ward 6, 3100 Woodcrest Creek Drive. My family's right over here, as you can see in the videos. I mean, I have no words for what you can describe. I'm trying to hold all my emotions, and it's not fair to my children having to be in a situation like this. We live in a, in a great neighborhood. That's one of the reasons why I moved to that neighborhood, because we wanted to. There was neighbor kids out playing whenever we drove through. We saw the house, we said, this is it. And in a short period of time afterwards, all this started. I had a whole list of what I was gonna say. I would say that the police officers did a great job at preventing, showing it. Also, I want to point out that everyone that's here on behalf of our neighborhood, if you don't mind standing, so we can show that we're all here, because we're, I'm sorry, but we're fed up with it. We don't, we don't know what else to do. We're reaching out for, for y'all's help. I don't know, that's all I got, I guess. I can go into stories if you want, but I think they did a great job at showing it. So thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Mark Tracy.
Good evening. I, I've always had dogs. I've lived in that subdivision 28 years.
So would you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Mark Tracy, sorry. I'm, I live a couple blocks from where these guys are, so personally, I've never met them. But what I can tell you that I've personally seen, I've retired from mental health for 40, after working 41 years at Griffin. In the last year and a half, I have two dogs that walk me every day. And I've walked out my front door, I mean, that's what I personally have seen. I've seen a guy going by on a kid's bicycle with a, I guess it's a legitimate bicycle on his shoulder, rides right to that house. I've seen people on bicycles going to that house day and night. During the middle of the day, I'll take my dogs for a walk regardless. And then probably one of the most interesting ones is I walk probably two miles every day with, or the dogs walk me. The, I was up, walking the dogs up blocks from where this residence is. And there's this guy. and there's this guy on a bicycle, wearing a, wearing a, uh, little backpack and he's obviously lost because he's down on the other end of Leaning Elm, riding around. I'm walking, I walk the dogs for 30 minutes and he's still riding around and he's trying to find this house. He's asking my across the street neighbors this last Sunday, where is this house down the way? They, my neighbors know what house they're, he's, they're looking for, but they're not going to tell them where the drug house is. So that, that happens just this last Sunday where I know who belongs in the neighborhood. I've been walking that neighborhood, that whole subdivision for 20 years and we have got a lot of foot traffic there. There are people that obviously are, I can't leave my garage door open anymore because of, of people that are, they're stealing mail, they're, they're opportunists, thieves, horse pirates, the whole nine yards. So it's, it's bad if, you know, a guy that worked for mental health for 40 years got a problem, but I've got a problem with this house.
Thank you, sir.
Kaitlyn Whitten.
Again, um, I know that I have already spoken on the issue, but I just wanted to reiterate, um.
Tell us who you are.
Oh, Kaitlyn Whitten, um, 3100 Woodcrest Creek Drive. Uh, we are right next door to the problem house. And I wanted to let you know a little bit, um, about some of the arrests that have happened. Um, the day that you guys were given the presentation was the same day those two gentlemen had the warrants and one ran. Well, my daughter goes to school at Longfellow and she has to walk the block down to the bus stop. I saw those gentlemen and I went, that's suspicious. So I went back home, got my daughter, took her to school and I called my husband, tell him what's going on. He calls, that's when everything transpires. I have to miss work because I take, middle school starts later. I start at eight at work, they have to be there 8:15. Um, on one of the times that, uh, the gentleman called Monster, he actually got arrested because of me, because he was outside our house yelling profanities at an imaginary person. I couldn't leave my home. I was 30 minutes late to work because I couldn't go outside to my car because this guy was so out of his mind. This house is a nuisance and I hope you guys find it as a nuisance. And I also wanted to let you know that my children are here. Um, two reasons. Um, one is because we want to show you guys they're real, they're here. I do have the children living next door to the drug house. Another reason is I can't leave them home, you know? They're of the age that can be left at home, but I can't. Because I didn't want to leave them not knowing if they were going to show up to the hearing or not and if they would do anything to my home. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, the next speaker, all I have is Shane.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Thank you so much for hearing us. I'm Shane Roddy and I live probably 60, 70 yards east of 3104 Woodcrest Creek Drive. Guys, I spent eight years in the United States Marine Corps and have extensive participation in the global war on terror. And after having to deal with that mess, I wanted a place that was safe and peaceful that I could raise, that my wife and I could raise our babies. And we could have chosen any place in the whole world, literally, to move and we moved into our, the neighborhood that we live in now. And for 15, 16 years, that place has been, life is good. We love our neighbors, get along with everybody. We have a park right behind our house. We've never had any problems until Eric Hudson and Daniel Owens moved into that house. And since then, we've had nothing, but the only way that I can describe it is absolute madness. I have found a bag of meth in front of my house. Yes, we find needles. Yes, the people that you saw on the screen, I have personally seen in our neighborhood. I know Eric came up here and asked you guys for an extension for him to move out, but guys, this has been going on long enough. It is not getting better. It is escalating to the point that I'm seriously concerned about everybody's safety. When I look at my neighbors and our kids and our babies, my neighbors are live and let people, live and let live, good people. They're peaceful, kind people. We have no agenda against Eric or Hudson, Eric Hudson or Daniel Owens whatsoever. But it's not too much to ask to live in a neighborhood where we don't have to have criminal elements literally patrolling our streets every single night. My wife and I live near the park and we have the, the sidewalk that goes up to the park. We, we see people back there all the time. It's become almost commonplace to find people back there melting down under the influence of methamphetamine and other drugs. And just a couple of weeks ago, I was driving around in Ada, Oklahoma, and I had to say to myself, oh, oh my God, I have forgotten what it's like to drive through an area that, that I don't see this element because it's become so, so commonplace. So I just really hope that you guys take into serious consideration the weight of this issue. Because myself, my neighbors, we're not just giving up and a, an evening to come up here and talk to you guys. These guys are actually risking their safety because of the behavior that I've witnessed from Daniel Owens.
Yes, sir.
Would you spell your last name for me?
Roddy, R-O-D-D-Y.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Sir, you're out of time.
Okay. Thank you so much, guys. You know what we're trying to say. Thank you, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
George Drosher, sorry if I pronounced the last name wrong.
I'm George Drosher. I live at 427 Elmcrest Drive, which is the second house on Elmcrest Drive. Our house backs into the park. My wife and I moved there back in 1997. That was a quiet, in fact, that was total woods, cows in our backyard. That vineyard, since then, has come into being with a retaining pond. There's a children's park. My, our kids, our grandkids have played in that park. We never worried. About, uh, August, my wife was with our granddaughter at the children's park about 10 o'clock in the morning. I looked out our back window and there were three individuals and they were high on who knows what, but you could tell that they were, it scared me so much. I re, I'm military retired for 22 years. I've carried weapons, I, I have weapons in my house. I found that I wouldn't carry one because it puts you in a situation that you, you have, it's a completely different mindset. But it scared me so much that I loaded a nine millimeter and I went up to the park where my wife, where our granddaughter was. And let me tell you, I never want to be in that situation again. And we ask that you do something about it. Because we shouldn't have to live in this country in that sort of situation where we feel we have to carry weapons in order to defend ourselves and our children. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
William Hawkins, did you sign up for this one too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I thought so.
So I don't live in that neighborhood, just so y'all know. Uh, my name is William Hawkins. I've, I've lived here in Norman almost 40 years. I've been a resident Sutton Place for 15. Over the past few years, uh, concerning things have been happening around, uh, around and, and near my neighborhood, as well as Sutton Wildlife Refuge, that caused me and my neighbors fear for our safety and our homes. As a Marine, I was trained for threat assessment, just like Shane, and all these different situations that I've been seeing. Last year, after the police came, uh, there was, there was a woman that was actually screaming out in the woods. Called the police, she was yelling for help and notified the officer of what I had heard. And this screaming goes on all the time. Uh, my concern is that the homeless who have set up camps there, they're doing drugs and they're starting fires. And that wouldn't happen, uh, it wouldn't take so much for a fire to burn out of control quickly, especially in Oklahoma with all the wind. Get back on tracks here. I have walked, uh, the woods here behind our homes, uh, taken the trails and, and many times have seen trash, needles, uh, trees being cut down and loose dogs everywhere. There are families and young children and women who take these trails. This is a high potential for something very bad to happen in an unsafe environment. Last week, while I was away from my home, I received a call from my neighbor letting me know that there was a big fire behind my home, just like I told the officer. Before the flames had started, he had heard gunshots. I felt helpless, angry, fear for my family and my home. After taking the police, uh, after calling the police about this incident, I was informed that the city of Norman is using taxpayers' money to bus homeless people up to Oklahoma City to get their drugs and then busing them back. And then there's needles being handed out to them. This is an, uh, this is facilitating an unsafe environment for our community uh, that could very well result in the potential of life and property. I, as well as my neighbors, are putting the council on notice that if this happens, loss of life or loss of property due to the compliance of criminal activity, that you will be sued. I'm also giving you two weeks to clean up Sutton Wildlife Refuge. At the end of this time, I will be calling the EPA and PETA. They will be notifying, uh, will be notifying.
Sir, you're running out of time. Have a break. Thank you.
Paul Wilson. Cheryl Ann Dinsel.
I'm sorry, Cheryl Ann Dinsel. I have property in wards four and six and am very familiar with the Woodcrest addition. Have seen individuals, you know, riding their bikes through the neighborhood, et cetera. I take umbrage with some, uh, council members that think that we need to, um, provide safe places for, um, drug use. This is what happens when you provide safe places for drug use. I personally, uh, demolished a duplex in the old Silk Stocking neighborhood that somebody decided they could break into and set up housekeeping there, trespassing, and, um, Lord knows what else was going on there. And I want to thank Norman PD for supporting my efforts to clean up my neighborhood. And, and now my other neighborhood. So thank you, gentlemen, very much. I appreciate you. I also want to thank, uh, Councilman Ball for his efforts and his wisdom in going and viewing the, um, uh, demolition of the camp down by the river. There's a lot of bad that happens when people are, are living in the woods. Certain individuals, uh, get very enterprising and preying on other individuals. And the fact that, um, there's a lot of grant monies being filtered down to support, um, particular individuals, um, making money off the less fortunate, that's a travesty and that's got to stop. Thank you.
Chelsea Gravel.
Hello, I'm Chelsea Gravel, Ward Four. I'm back tonight. Um, well, I think this goes to show what kind of crime we're facing in our community. It's really hurtful to hear about this happening in my community when I've been coming for months to speak with you. Uh, today, I had a very interesting occurrence downtown with the officer from the crime that happened last year in February on my property.
We're talking about this house?
Yes, and the crime that's occurring at this house is also on Porter as I live off of Porter. And the crime that's happening at this house is happening all along Porter in my community. On Main Street, I was followed today and yelled at as a criminal chased me down the street once again. There is crime in this community. I've been having criminals down Porter for a year now. Who are you going to save? What crime are you going to stop? What child is not going to be followed with a hatchet? Who's not going to be chased or asked for drugs? What middle school child can go to school without being approached by a sex offender asked for a cigarette? When are you going to hear your people that there is crime in the community? The crime at this house is the crime that is allowed on all of our streets. Just walk downtown, see a drug deal happen. I've seen several now. They're happening at all of our gas stations. This is no surprise. It's terrible, it's sad, but you're allowing it. You're allowing it every day, every single day. The crime at this individual house that is hurting our community, that keeps us separate from someone else. We're not Oklahoma City, a big city, but you are doing this. I've been coming for eight months. Are we going to keep doing this and not save anybody from crime? From the crime at this house down Porter? More crime.
Carlinda.
Carlinda Gravel, Ward Four, council, mayor. I am shocked. I am absolutely shocked. And thank you so much for coming and speaking up on this. I did not know that other people were having people carry additional bicycles as I see on a regular basis. I did not know that when I see increased activities that I have had to tell law enforcement in my neighborhood, this is what could actually be happening behind those closed doors. Do you now believe these people are committing hyperbole? Do you now believe that the citizens are coming and lying about this as you have told me to my face in public? Do you now believe that the citizens who come up and speak up about this issue are making this up? This is what this turns into. I'm shocked. That's all I have to say is I'm absolutely shocked. We're going to keep coming, we're going to keep asking for help. Citizens are rising up. Citizens are posting photos to show what's actually happening in, in our neighborhoods because we're not being heard. No one's listening. There are law enforcement that are now coming forward and trying to take action. I want to appreciate Norman Police Department. I want to let you know how much the citizens are noticing what you're doing. Sheriff Amoson and your deputies, we know what you're doing. We thank you so much. Thank you for stepping up. Thank you for law enforcement today that is coming to present to you all of the details surrounding this issue. This is a very serious issue for our city, very serious, and I hope you're taking it as seriously as I'm shocked. Thank you.
That concludes the public comments, mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
So could city attorney or Janie Snyder explain why this process would have taken two years of incidents? Is it just based on the owner of the property? Or is it incidents happening at a property that accumulate to get to this point? And also, um, if we've been building this case for two years, what is the standard for notifying the person who does own it? Like Mr. Crawford or Hudson saying he only had five days or something like that. So what is that? What is our process officially on an issue like this?
So I'll answer the first question, um, first. Uh, the reason it took, I think it wasn't two years, I think it was more, uh, the last year, right? We needed to get three convictions or three guilty pleas, no contest pleas, two charges within the house as one of the criteria under our nuisance ordinance. And so that's one of the things we were looking at. Um, we, we were building that information all, all of this time and so, uh, that's one of the reasons it took a while. As far as the notice that was posted in accordance with the ordinance, which I think says 10 days, uh, prior to the hearing, we posted it in his yard. Look at my calendar. I believe it was, uh, February 16th. Is that correct? 16th, uh, and then also mailed notice by certified mail on that date as well. And then also mailed notice by certified mail on that date as well.
So, you'd say Mr. Hudson's had more than five days to arrange?
Yes.
A lawyer or whatever he needs to respond to this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And then, I don't know if Officer, Master Officer, Sergeant Allison or Gomez would like to come up. I have a question for you, both of you maybe. An incident like this, is that, are you two investigating this because this is the area of town that you're assigned to? Or would you two be investigating an incident like this anywhere in the city of Norman?
This could be anywhere in the city of Norman. We're on our proactive crimes enforcement unit. Part of what we do is address specific issues that are expressed to us. So, it could be something as broad as an area where there's a whole lot of collisions that are occurring that our crime analyst gives us and they want to do traffic enforcement. It could be, hey, there's an entire apartment complex where we're seeing activity. It could be a specific address like this. It could be one person who's, it could be car thefts, gang-related things, just whatever the big ticket issue at the time is, that's kind of what we're assigned to, try to snub before it grows out of control.
Are there other residential addresses in Norman that you're currently investigating to take this same action against?
There are several addresses in Norman where similar behavior occurs. As you can see, it took, we started, when we learned of this address was April of last year, and it's taken this long to get to this point. So, this is not something, this is the first time we've made it this far. It's not something we've ever done before, and it's not something we could do just because of the amount of work that you have to put into it to get to this point. What made this one a tremendous difference was the community support behind it. They actually established their own neighborhood watch group as a result of the activity at this address, which helped us create this case. And there's other addresses, but you don't see the same level of community involvement in it. And it's clear, every one of those people that we showed earlier, I don't think any of them are currently incarcerated. They've all been arrested, released, arrested again at different locations. So, it's not a problem we can solve simply by law enforcement action.
Is that a matter of local city law?
No.
Is that a state law?
It depends what they're charged. Some of them were arrested for municipal warrants. They're not going to do prison time for their unpaid tickets. So, they might stay a weekend, get OR'd. They might sit out their city fines and be released. That's standard.
And there's, and this is in the middle of a neighborhood, it's in the middle of a section, you know, quarter section. So, there's not any services that are provided in this area. There's no public transit in this area. If we abate this problem, is it your belief this issue would very likely go away for this neighborhood?
I think it would make a tremendous impact, yes.
There's other houses in the neighborhood. Which ones?
Yeah, if there's others, please let us know. Is it the department's policy that if a crime is reported to you, that you will enforce the law equally against anybody in this city regardless of their housing status or not?
That's always our goal. And I think we are two of the most reasonable officers and work people and spend time to get to know them, and I think that's evidenced by this work.
Yeah, I think you've shown a lot of patience. I'm impressed that you've been able to interact with this address in a way that hasn't escalated to a situation where police are having to use force or a situation like that. And I think that goes to your de-escalation ability. So, okay, well, I appreciate the presentation you put together. I would be interested in knowing what ways that it could be done differently so that it doesn't take a year or two or an entire neighborhood. If there's a problem like this that is consistent and ongoing like that at the same address, it would seem like there might be a better way to address it or a more efficient way. So, that may be a bigger discussion, but I appreciate both of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, stay there just because I want to say thank you for that presentation. I pushed the button to speak because I'm your council member, but I have no words and you just kept slide after slide after slide, and it's just overwhelming for me to hear it. I couldn't imagine living it. So, I'm a big Frady cat, so thank you for being so brave and willing to do this for us and serve your community in that way. To the residents, you absolutely have my support in moving forward with this. I have no words. I am so sorry. This is not far from where I live. Ward Six is almost predominantly residential in a very quiet, very peaceful neighborhood. And so, I'm so sorry that this happens anywhere within our community and especially next to a park with families and children. So, I don't know, I'm so sorry. And then thank you to Chief Foster. Give them a raise.
I want to say, just thinking, you know, this neighborhood has my empathy. I'm not shocked that this happens. When I moved into my neighborhood in 2016, somewhere before the pandemic, I did have a house that I did hear a small caliber firearm and did call that one in and called in on a couple that was substance-dependent, living in a shed of a rent house behind my fence. So, I'm not shocked, but this leads into the next part, which is about harm reduction because we do this and we understand that these people will likely pack up because we've made their house uninhabitable. Where are they going? Do we as a city have a plan? Has social services engaged with these individuals? You know, have they been offered pathways through going to treatment court potentially? That's kind of where my thoughts are as we work our way through this process.
I'll ask the city manager one question. Based on a comment we heard, is there a city-funded program that sends people to the city to do drugs and then brings them back? I'm not aware of any city-funded program that does that.
The city, we are not aware of a program to deliver people to Oklahoma City to acquire drugs. There is a program that the city council did authorize, the reimbursement for mileage for Norman caravans to provide transportation services to the homeless population. There, I couldn't tell you their point of origin or the destination of those trips. Those are the only dollars we're paying for, for any type of individual person transportation.
Okay. Appreciate that answer and clarification. That's the only question I had. Thank you.
I was actually asking a question. Has social services or any pathways for treatment court been offered to these folks?
Direct to the desk, ma'am.
Sure, or municipal court, whoever needs to answer that.
I'll sneak in on this one. They obviously very specific addressed this issue, but from a broader perspective, we certainly from police department standpoint, we want to connect them with all the resources we have in the community and seeing our officers engage in the community and the resources. And that's, I think you saw the heart tonight, what they would, what they would have liked to do. So, we certainly, that's always our first option.
Is there an agency that you would contact to specifically address drug abuse with these people as they exit this residence?
Ask the question.
Like shred the stigma, would you call an organization like that to say, hey, you're getting evicted, basically? Have you thought about a plethora of options? These are people who were substance abuse, addicted themselves, got out of it, and their whole mission is to make sure that they can help stop this cycle and it's through harm reduction. So, I'm asking, what organization are you contacting?
We'll contact the continuum of care and we will work with the state to help plug them into resources, just like we would any call or any encounter.
So, what organization in the continuum of care is doing harm reduction?
We will call Cara Fritz, for example, and she will be our first, many times our first connection.
Who does she represent?
Okay. Is there a question, council member? I'm sorry.
I just want to know the organi, what is the plan? You're telling me it's Cara Fritz? It sounds like it's kind of being made up on the fly. I'm totally in support of this. I would just like to see, because I know that this isn't the only type of drug house in this community, that we have a plan in place for the others because this probably won't be the last time. Hopefully, we don't get to this point again, but I would like to see, moving forward, like, oh, we're contacting these people because it's this situation with drug abuse and needles.
It's the drugs, it's the violence. We need to know.
It's both. There's multiple houses in that neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am, we can, but from the police department standpoint, we aren't, we can't be the only solution. We certainly want to help engage all of our resource in the community, but the police department can't be the only answer.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved.
Second. I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Council members, you may cast your votes. Thank you, officer.
All votes have been cast and the motion to close the public hearing passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt. Second.
I'll try it. Motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 26, awarding of the bid for the purchase of $16 million general obligation bonds, series 2024A, and vote to award said bonds to Robert W. Baird &amp; Company as the lowest and best bidder. I'll entertain a motion to accept all bids, meeting specifications, and award the bid to Robert W. Baird &amp; Company.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and second.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Anthony Francisco, the Finance Director. On October the 10th, the voters of Norman approved and authorized $50 million worth of general obligation bonds to be issued for repair and replacement of bridges throughout Norman. This is the proposed first tranche, or first portion of that $50 million authorization, $16 million to begin the program. We did have a successful bidding process for the placement of this $16 million of general obligation bonds. We had five qualified bidders with interest rates ranging from 3.4% to 3.666%. Robert W. Baird from Milwaukee was the successful bidder. We would recommend approval of that bid and the ordinance that accompanies it.
Yes, I had asked the city attorney and other staff if they could talk about the bidding process, how we, why do we go with the lowest, best bidder on stuff like that? And with the, with this being interest rates, why do we go with the lowest person?
It's actually required by statute in Title 62, Section 354. We're required to competitively bid the interest rate when we issue general obligations bonds and we're required to, I believe, take the lowest interest cost.
Is that how it works on construction projects like the library?
No.
Other projects too?
The standard for construction projects is set forth in our code and in state law and the Competitive Bidding Act. One says lowest and best and one says lowest responsible bidder. And so, typically, what we try to do is look at the bids, both from a money standpoint but also from a quality standpoint. That's been something we've been working hard to incorporate more into our bid specifications for projects like the library going forward. Some sort of ranking process to determine what's the best or most responsible bid, not just the lowest. Because sometimes, for example, if you get a really low bid, that's a lot lower than all the other bids, that's a red flag and you're going to get change orders or they missed something. So, you aren't required to take the lowest bid and certainly we look at all the factors.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Nash?
So, a few months ago when we voted to put this on the ballot, and I would never vote to withhold a proposition based on how I'd personally vote for an item, but this was before the city started kicking off its campaigning, its marketing of this project. And this project is in its design phase and in October 2022, it was presented to council with erroneous information. You know, it's, we're presented with a list of bridges that, like when we, when it's being sold to the public, it's presented with a list of bridges that aren't even on the ballot. And then ultimately, this bond program is going to catch us up and it's not going to address all of Norman's 18 highest need bridges. And I simply can't support the sale of bonds that, to fund a program that was sold to the public as something that it's not. And that's, I don't know where to go from here. I don't know what to do to fix it. I'm probably the only one up here that thinks that it needs fixing, but I'm the only one up here that I think has actually looked at the project and the program and all the details that are going into it. I'm the only one that's brought any, raised any kind of issue on the fact that seven of these bridges are with the Federal Highway Administration's highest rating of good. They're not structurally deficient, they're not at risk of becoming structurally deficient, they're not functionally obsolete. Yet millions are going to be spent to rehabilitate and replace bridges that don't need to be rehabilitated or replaced. So, when it comes, the only thing that I can do now is just to vote against the sale of the bonds. Thank you.
Mr. Sturt, would you please give your side of the story?
Good evening. Scott Sturtz, Interim Director of Public Works. We did put together a PowerPoint to try to address some of the concerns that were voiced. Am I going in the wrong direction, Bryce? Very beginning? Just a minute, technical difficulties. This bridge bond program, obviously bridges are a serious concern. There we go. And as we looked at this, we've been doing inspections every two years as part of the federal program. Those inspections are done through ODOT. They actually pay for it. We select the consultant from a list of pre-selected consultants. They award it to them, they provide us with that information. We've done this for many years. We have years of data on the bridges. But on this one, for the special election, just kind of wanted to cover some of the history that we had here. So, we took some of our information of the 2019 and we looked at that and we determined there's a real need in Norman. We'd heard multiple times from council members that, yes, we need to do something about our bridges. We've been looking for funding for my entire time here for over 10 years. Funding for local bridges just really is not available. We kept being told to go to the county. We could not find funding at the county. We could not find funding at the state. We did successfully take care of a couple of the bridges that were in very serious need through transportation bond programs, the Main Street Bridge, also the Lindsay Bridge over Imhoff, Imhoff Creek. So, we took care of some of them in that way. But as we went through this, we got to this point, and then, so we reached out and we, this is when we first came to council. We did a bridge discovery project, which council awarded back in January of 2022. We did a bid proposal, a bond proposal to CPNT back in October of 2022. We had council study sessions regarding this issue in January, June, and July of 2023. There was a first reading of the ordinance on July 25th. And I'd like to say that back on July 11th, that meeting, that was when we came back. We did some independent survey by an independent company, Amber Company did that work for us. And that's why we came back, we came back with the terms of the bond. There'd been some early discussion regarding whether it should be shorter-term bonds, more like our street maintenance. We do a very short, five-year programs and keep moving forward and asking for and keep moving forward and asking for reissuance, or whether to go for a larger, more longer-term program. The information that we got after discussion with council and after getting the survey information back was that the program that we came up with, the longer-term program, would be the better way to go. And a lot of that stemmed back to the fact, because these bridges are expected to have a lifespan of 30 to 40 years, to look at it as a longer-term program and a larger issuance would be a better way to move forward with this program. So we had the first reading on July 25th. The second reading was on August 8th. There's a lot of discussion that night about the program, and we went through that, and a lot of questions were answered. And then, eventually, on October 10th, 2023, the citizens of Norman voted in favor of this proposal. One of the questions that's been raised is regarding the length of the term up there. If you see there on your right, we have the proposition language. And at the end, it says that this will become due within 20 years from the date. So in the bond language, the proposition language, we stated it was going to be a 20-year bond program. Again, just to show that we were trying to be as transparent and upfront as we could, this is a mail or a flyer that went out to all the voting, to all the registered accounts in Norman. You can see there on the right, it listed all of the locations for those bridge projects. And there at the very bottom, under "How does this affect me?", it's over that the bonds will be paid back over 20, that's a 20-year bond program. So again, we were very consistent with both the messaging and, on both the locations and on the bond terms. So let's go back to how these bridges were selected. Again, we start with our 2019 bridge data. This is, again, it's a federal form that is filled out for each bridge. There's five criteria, and I'll kind of discuss how that criteria is utilized here in a minute. But we looked at that, and we kind of took that, and we put it in a ranking order. You're all very familiar with how we rank our sidewalks. We have a ranking criteria, we put in different things. We have a format, and in the end, it gives everything an equal rank. Well, we had done that. We took that data, we put it in. We put it in, including factors such as the age of the bridge, the sufficiency rating, which is that, that data comes from the bridge inspection. So it's the raw number, if it was a load-posted bridge, and also the status. And the status is where I'd like to spend just a moment discussing. There are several statuses that are discussed in the bridge program. The first is structurally deficient. What structurally deficient means in that term is that there are five rating areas. If you get a four in one area, it is structurally deficient. It doesn't necessarily say that the bridge is safe, unsound. It's really just a categorization. It puts it into a descriptor category. The other one is functionally obsolete. And what that means is that that bridge does not meet current design standards. That can be lane width. There's many factors that go into that. Again, it is not really discussing the structural safety or the safety of the bridge. Maybe the safety factor of the traveling public, but not necessarily of the bridge itself. And then, and most recently, they've included one that's called at-risk, or AR. And that one really is loosely defined. In fact, it doesn't really appear in the federal program, but in the state program, they call that if you get a five in one of those five ranking categories. So structurally deficient is four, that's a five. So it says you're getting close. Where we see a lot of the program that a lot of the bridges fall under is it's actually on scour and erosion around the base or behind the walls. And that's something that council has given us, the program with bridge maintenance, and we're able to go out and repair a lot of that with that program. So you can be structurally deficient and have a score of 40 out of 50, but you can actually have a bridge that is not structurally deficient that has a score of 24. So it's really subjective. So to say that those do not indicate whether the bridge is good or bad. Those are just put it into descriptors for further investigation and for further inspections. Once you're on the SD list, you have to be inspected more frequently. So it's just a way for them to check some balance. So after we went through our rating, and we picked what we thought were the top, in fact, at the time, it was 20 bridges. We reached out to WH Lochner. They'd been doing all of our inspections for about three years. And they took our information, they looked at it, said that they would have applied the same type of a ranking system. They concurred with what we did. They said, we think that you've also picked the right ones. They put together the report, that's the cover there on the right, that said that here are the costs and what we think that needs to be done to each bridge. So after that, that's when we began looking into the funding and what would be appropriate funding levels and amounts to go forward to bring to council. So just kind of some of the raw information here. This is a map of the 80 bridges, and oddly enough, we've added three in the past two years, and I think we've got two more coming online with future development. So that number changes. Anytime a new bridge is constructed that's over 20 feet in length, it goes on this list, and we have to start tracking it on this list. So this is a map that shows you the six load-posted bridges in Norman. You can see them there, ranging from Four Tons, which, by the way, is a 60th Street Bridge, which is currently closed due to the significant damage to the beams, all the way up to 20 Tons, and that's the bridge on Porter, and then another one down further south. So the projects that were selected, they are shown here on this map. You can see that the triangles represent replacement structures, and the hexagons show rehabilitation structures. And then, there's the discrepancy there between green, which are the ones that we're guaranteeing in the program, and then the blue, that are the ones that we are holding, that we will get to later in the program. So as we look forward, and we start looking into those programs, these are the 10 projects that were selected to be the priority projects, and they will be constructed in years one through five. You can see them listed there. They're about $38.5 million worth of the total $50 million bond program. And this first tranche, the 16 million, will take us down to that red line. And so it'll basically take us down through the first six projects for construction, and will also get us the design on North Porter Bridge, which is the largest, largest bridge and largest project in the entire bond program. And then, there were eight projects that were listed that were shown to be there for the projects that we would put in at the end. And those are about $11.5 million roughly. So that adds up to the total of the 50 million. I think that there's been some confusion here. These were not listed in the bond language as to specifically what projects are being added. However, in our opinion, this is part of the bond program. And if we were to change anything on this list, we would come back for council action to accept that. We've had a history of doing that with all of our bond programs. We've done it on street maintenance, where we've come back and asked for a street to be added because we found that we had funding left at the end. We've also done it for things as small as switching from bike lanes to a 10-foot bike path on 36th Avenue Northwest. So while these were not literally listed in the bond language, this is what we presented to the public, this is our bond list. But by holding these out, this is the last $11.5 million, it gives us an opportunity to be able to be fluid within the program. If next year, a bridge that's not on the program fails, and we need to be able to move in an emergency situation, this gives us a fluidity to be able to move into that and to be able to take care of the public quickly and effectively. And at that point, when we come before council, we would say we'd recommend that this bridge be postponed or looked at at a later date. But that would be a council decision that we would come to you for, would not make that decision within our own staff purview. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions or try to clarify any further information.
Anything from council? Yes, sir.
So those eight anticipated bridges aren't in the bond language? Or aren't in the, weren't in the ballot language, correct?
None of the 18 bridges are listed in the ballot language.
But they're presented to the public like they were?
The language that we have, that we went out and all the information that we presented and all the presentations that we made listed it exactly like we just presented here. In fact, the two slides that I showed you of the priority and the anticipated, those are actually directly from all of the public meetings that were held regarding this program.
Oh, I know, those 18 bridges were presented consistently to the public, but they're not in the ballot. They weren't on that language. They're not.
It's quite common for the ballot language to refer to the ordinance. And in this case, that was the case. The ordinance listed the individual bridge projects. The voters approved the ordinance.
No, and I see the justification in it that only, you know, 30% of that, of the, you know, the bonds can go to something else, that only 70% has to be committed to what's listed in the ballot. And it kind of takes a step out of that equation if you take these out and present them as an anticipated secondary list rather than committing to them in the ballot language, because then people might feel like there's a bait and switch. But still, that could have been presented to the public rather than these 18 bridges are going to be addressed. And aside from those 18 bridges, can we go back to the map? It's got the, two more. That one. So... Seeing there's four structurally deficient bridges listed here?
There are four.
Have been four structurally deficient bridges listed. One has been delisted, it was Imhoff over Imhoff Creek. And after we completed that work, after they came back and did the new inspection that actually removed it from the SD list. So it is not listed as structurally deficient, so there's only three.
Right. So what about Willow Grove Drive?
Willow Grove Drive is a very unique situation. That's actually a private road. We do not even have access to access that road. So it's been a long history. We're currently working with the county. There is some documentation that the county has that shows that the county took ownership and responsibility for that bridge. It was never transferred to the city. The city has never had responsibility for that bridge. The county is working with the state and the homeowners at this time.
Was that one at least removed from this map?
It has not been removed from the map because that's been conversations, it's been ongoing as we got this last round of bridge inspections.
Okay, are there any structurally deficient bridges that are not on this bond program?
There is. There is the bridge on Indian Hills. And there's also the bridge on 60th, or on Robinson, excuse me, between 72nd and 60th. Those are not on this because at the time, they are actually directly in the path of the proposed turnpikes. And we did not want to expend city funds on bridges that may or may not make it through that program. And since then, the Indian Hills Bridge has actually been put on the state list for scour mitigation. The bridge on, excuse me, Indian Hills is on there for scour mitigation.
So we're putting the safety of our bridges in the hands of an entity that we have no control over. When was the last update on when the proposed turnpike could be constructed? Do you know what that is?
It's, I'd have to go back and look at what the date on the Access Oklahoma is.
Last time I heard, it was around 2034.
And the opportunity there, if we did find out that either it was not going to happen, or we just determined that this, that this bridge, let's say the Robinson Street Bridge was, and it really needed to be addressed in a quicker manner, we could look at putting that in, that last $11.5 million.
So if, and this is all assuming that it would be constructed in 10, 10 years' time, is that bridge going to be fine? Why couldn't that bridge be listed to begin with? Because the safety of our bridges in the hands of some other entity that we have no control over?
I'm sorry, sir, I don't have an answer for that. I was not in the room for every one of the conversations because I was not in this position at that time. However, all the decisions were made with the best interest of the city in mind.
Right. The guy that was in the room for all these conversations has since retired and gone to work with a contractor that's trying to build this thing, that, the turnpike.
Let's stay, stay on the topic.
Sorry. Are there any bridges that are load-rated that are not on this list?
The only one is that Robinson Street Bridge. And that's also going towards a dead end, serves very few people, has a very low average travel vehicles.
Ambulance weigh? Just general curiosity. I don't know how much an ambulance weighs.
I don't have that data in front of me.
Probably 20,000, maybe a little bit more. School buses.
So is that bridge able to support an ambulance?
You'd have to give me, I'd have to do more work on that.
Okay. So anyways, my intent wasn't to nitpick the items. My problem is that erroneous data, these maps that are, that still have bridges that aren't relevant, according to various individuals from Public Works, was presented to council, erroneous, incomplete, what have you. 18 bridges were presented to the public as though they were part of the ballot language, but they're not. And then, ultimately, it was presented as a program that is going to catch, catch us up and address our highest, our 18 highest need bridges, but it's not. And that's, that's why I can't support sale of the bonds.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Grant?
I was just curious. So for clarity's sake, let's say one of these bridges goes down. This bond, having funds available, would be able to address that immediately since it would be something that the community would need to use?
You mean, one of them that's within the bond program currently?
No. There was like a little $11 million set aside.
Yes, ma'am.
To do emergency repairs if...
Well, we set that aside, but we named the projects that would go to that.
Okay.
So if one of those bridges needed quicker repairs, we could move it within the program. But if we had another bridge that was in need of repair, we would come back to council and make recommendations to look at that list of projects. And if there was one that we could replace, that we felt that had a, that we could deal with at a future time, we would come back and ask council to make that change within the program.
Okay. And the other thing is, since I have the luxury of waiting to speak next, I looked up how much an ambulance weighs. They say 10,000 pounds to about 14,000 pounds.
So that's five, five to seven tons, and that's a six, a five-ton rated bridge.
Okay. Thank you.
So I put it at borderline.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. So if I understand correctly from Mr. Francisco's comments and yours, that the ordinance that the council passed that listed out the projects, and then voters voted to approve that, we have to do those projects that are listed in that, in the ordinance. Is that right? Those have to be done?
Yes, sir.
Anthony, get your, get the microphone closer to your mouth.
Oh, sorry.
Different operator error. So yes, in the ordinance that council approved and that was ultimately approved by the voters, there was a list of projects that at least 75% of the proceeds of the bonds have to be used on. There was an additional list of projects that are more flexible, that on an emergency basis, bond proceeds could be used to address those bridge projects that were not individually listed in that ordinance. I think that came about during the discussions that council was having because council will remember that, for example, the Haven Book Bridge and the Imhoff Creek Bridge were not the highest-rated bridges to be addressed at the time they washed out. So I think council wanted to make sure that there would be some proceeds available in these bonds for bridges that may not be the highest priority right now, but conditions change. And when conditions change, if there's a flood on this side of town, but not that side of town, that washes out a bridge over a year, there are some bond proceeds available, as Mr. Sturtz said, as by council action, to be used to address those emergency needs.
So if we didn't approve this tonight, what position does that put us in? That we have a voter-approved program, that we have projects we have to build that may get more expensive the longer we wait? So what impact would it have if we don't approve this? And how would we address the concerns of Councilmember Nash if we didn't approve this tonight?
Issuing these bonds and receiving these bond proceeds, the $16 million, if you will, enables the Public Works Department, the engineers that they hire, and ultimately, the contractors that they hire to get to work on addressing those bridges that the voters approved to be done. If the bonds are not issued, obviously, there would be delay. Obviously, ultimately, costs go up. And yes, we would be in a more of a bind to address the full list of bridge projects that the voters approved to do.
And the interest rates that we... The lowest being 3.40. Do you see, foresee that improving? I know we've been in a point before where we had like 0.5% interest or no interest, basically.
Yeah, those are for some of the five-year street... Yeah, those are for some of the five-year street deals, they were below one percent. Bond market conditions change constantly. That's why there's an emergency clause on the ordinance. But we would hope that bond rates would stay fairly stable, we'd be somewhere around three point four percent if we had to rebid it, but we don't want to rebid it. We have a very competitive bid rate right now, very close bids, as you see, which means that this is reflecting market conditions, and we would like to move forward.
And are these, is this the type of debt that we can refinance at any point in the twenty-year program? If.
I believe that the bonds would be callable after ten years. My, my feeling would be that over the next ten years, who knows what may happen, but I would suspect that sixteen million dollars worth of bonds would probably in ten years not be worth the cost of reissuing debt.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right. Now you're happy? This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak. Has anybody signed up to speak, madam?
Yes, we'll start with Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward Four. I have been sort of trying to follow the issue with the bridge bonds and particularly the evaluation of bridge neediness. I don't know anything about bridges. I do, however, know a lot about sort of like formal issues in valuation stuff. I'm trained as a decision theorist, so thinking through sort of ranking-type issues are, are sort of important in the stuff that I do at my day job. I usually like hearing from engineers because they usually agree about that stuff, and most of the time they're right. So it makes me really nervous when engineers disagree about what the most important kind of issue is, because it should be a pretty algorithmic decision based on some factors. So one of the things, a suggestion and then a question. One of the things that I think would be helpful to do is, is to just ask staff in particular to just sort of spell out where the evaluation criteria come from and how they're, they're building them up. It's relatively easy to see when things make sense, but it also exposes that sort of stuff to the non-engineers in the crowd who might be useful. But the question then is, suppose it turns out that we didn't do a good job of evaluating what bridges needed to be done. I mean, I think that's really the fundamental concern that Councilmember Nash has talked about. If we've got eighteen, and there are five other bridges that belong on the list, and four that don't belong on that list, does that put us in any potential trouble in terms of like bond risk or anything like that? What are the financial implications of worries that we might have got this sort of thing wrong? Because my financial expert had to go get our daughter, so I haven't got anybody to, to talk me through that sort of stuff. So I think it would be useful for you guys to think about, you know, if we screwed this up, are there financial risks to that by offering these kinds of bonds? Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
I don't see Dr. Byrd here, so we will move past that. And Cynthia has gone, so. Paul Wilson? Oh, no, you didn't. I need to go home. Cheryl Ann Dinsel?
Cheryl Ann Dinsel, Ward's four and six. I want to thank Councilwoman Nash for bringing up the point that a lot of times when we do get the flyers sent to us on a bond issue, or, you know, something that the citizenry is to vote on and approve, or, or just generally, you know, where are we going to spend some money? There's a lot of fear tactics used in, in the, in the, what I would call flyer propaganda that goes out. And I want to, and, and I understand that in looking at the language on a ballot and the flyer ballot is completely different. And so not understanding the legalese of some of the ballots, you know, the citizenry goes by what was sent to the mailbox, okay? And if the language that's sent to the mailbox is vastly different than what actually the language in the ballot is, I find that very egregious. And I want the citizens of Norman to be aware that we have an upcoming election on the O G and E issue, and there's a lot of fear in what's being sent to the mailbox. Thank you.
Chelsea Gravel?
Chelsea Gravel, Ward Four. I'd also like to thank Nash for bringing up some really good topics for us to discuss and think, think about as we move forward with our bridges. Thank you for representing the citizens as you question what we should do moving forward for our infrastructure and our streets. Thank you.
Carlinda?
Carlinda Gravel, Ward Four. I would also like to thank you, Mr. Nash, for bringing this information forward. There's a lot that you guys have access to, a lot more information than we as the citizens sometimes are made aware of or have the time to invest in. I realize there's a risk if we wait or postpone this, but use some very strong language to explain the issues concerning this. And due to that, I would really like to, I know you guys should be working as a team, so each of you will have strengths and weaknesses, and hopefully you can work together as a team to complement one another. It sounds like you have some really good information to bring forward that might need to be hashed out, just to make sure that you're all on the same page, and these big decisions are not made without taking those things into consideration. I think I'd still like to see, it doesn't sound like your concerns have been resolved, so I realize the risk involved, and I thank the departments for bringing the information forward. I would like to see the concerns that you have be kind of hashed out before we decide what we should do. This is a, this is a big deal for our city, and I just, I don't know all the details that you all know, but it sounds like there's a lot more that we, the citizens, aren't necessarily aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's the last one, yeah.
That was the last one. Any final comments from council? Seeing none. The motion, excuse me, the motion on the floor is to accept all bids meeting specifications and award the bid to Robert W. Baird and Company. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to accept the bids and award passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Nash.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number twenty-seven, an ordinance providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds, excuse me, Series 2024A in the sum of sixteen million dollars by the City of Norman, authorized at an election duly called and held for such purpose, prescribing the form of bonds, providing for registration thereof, designating the registrar for the issue, providing for a levy of an annual tax for the payment of principal and interest, excuse me, on the bonds and fixing other details of the issue, approving the forms of a continuing disclosure agreement, and an official statement authorizing executions and actions necessary for the issuance and delivery of the bonds, and declaring an emergency. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject on second reading.
Motion. Second.
A motion and second. This is a companion item to the previous item. Any further questions from council? Your buttons are, okay.
I was just gonna, Anthony was going to maybe answer a question, I don't know if he wanted to give you a chance to do that, about financial stuff.
It was a question that came up from Mr. Ellis, but I don't remember now.
It was about risk, Mr. Francisco? Risk?
Oh, yeah, okay, so I think the question had to do with the downside risk if we did not issue the bonds. Understand that what the, what the investors in the bonds are interested in is only that you do what you told the voters you were going to do. So we will be doing bond projects, and we are bound by that ordinance to do bridge projects. We can't do anything else. We will be in compliance with that. That's what the continuing disclosure agreement is about. We have to continually disclose that the bond proceeds are being used for what we said we were going to do. As long as we are in compliance with that, and our staff, you as council, will make sure that we are in compliance with doing what we told the voters we were going to do. There would be no downside risk unless we violated that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Roland, I think there was. The component in that, in that risk question about, you know, what risk the bondholders might have. With a voter-approved general obligation bond, Mr. Francisco prepares an annual levy that goes to the county tax collector's office. These are about the safest investment anywhere. These, these are backed by voter-approved obligations to attach to property for tax levy, so the risk is almost nonexistent.
That's why the interest rates are low.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, hearing none. Are there any speakers registered for the item?
Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward Four. Yeah, I think I was the person who was kind of pushing on the risk issue, and I didn't make myself clear, so maybe try to be crystal clear. The, the concern raised by Councilmember Nash was that we told the taxpayers, you know, via the bond issuing process, that we were going to be doing two things. One is working on the most important bridges, and the other is working on these particular eighteen bridges. And I think the concern is, is there any issue with, say, a taxpayer or someone claiming that we're not doing what we said we would with the bond proceeds because we, we booted the assessment of the bridges? So I, I, I think I understood your answer to the previous question, which was, look, as long as we say we're going to do what we did, that's really the financial risk question. Is there any concern, and I guess maybe this is partly a legal question, is there any concern that we're on the hook for doing the larger project that we said we were after, which is getting the most unsafe bridges fixed? If those two things were different, does that put us in a bind in any way? Thanks.
Mr. Floyd, would you mind answering that question for us, please?
Can I dare fail to mention that we are joined by our bond council in our financial advisory teams?
David Floyd with Floyd and Driver, also here is Nate Ellis with the Public Finance Law Group. The, the risk that he's talking about is if you don't do the projects that you said in the ballot you were going to do. And, and that is correct, there could be a challenge that if you don't do what you said you were going to do in those eighteen projects on the, on the ordinance. The way that it's set out under the Bond Issue Proceeds Act is you have to tell the voters we're seventy percent of the, the bond dollars are going to be spent, and then you have to actually spend eighty-five percent of those dollars on those projects. As long as the city does that, as long as the city stays in compliance, then, then there's no risk.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers?
Cynthia?
Good evening, Cynthia Rogers, Ward Four. I had to step out, play Uber driver, but I'm back now. So I didn't get to speak on the first part of this, and I think it's always a concern that voters have a good understanding of what it is that they're voting for, and I know that can be nuanced and difficult. So I too share concerns about whether that package itself was being marketed as, you know, taking care of priority bridges, even though I understand also it's hard to pin down what we mean by priority. But in, in reference to the item right now, I'm always a little miffed by emergency clauses when it's something we know we're going to do and we know in advance, and then all of a sudden, we have to have an emergency clause to push us through quickly. We know we were issuing bonds, and so I guess I'm asking why, if there was such a rush, it wasn't on the agenda sooner. Thank you.
And the need for the emergency, again, is that the bond conditions change by the minute, certainly by the hour, certainly by the day. And investors and bidders in municipal bonds cannot be expected to hold their bids for thirty days. So that's why, that's the need for the emergency, is to move along the closure of the bond process such that we can hold to the rates that were bid.
And that changes the amount of vote that we need, does it not?
Yes, sir, you need to, you need to have a three-fourth majority or seven votes to pass the emergency clause.
Thank you, sir. Other speakers?
Cheryl Ann Dinsel? Chelsea Gravel? And Carlinda? Okay, so that is all.
All right, any final comments from council? Hearing none. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Nash.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject Emergency Section Ten.
Motion to approve.
A motion and second. The motion on the floor is to approve Emergency Section Ten. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the Emergency Section Ten passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Nash.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Should do that.
A motion and second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Nash.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number twenty-eight, an ordinance rezoning property located at 305 East Boyd Street from CCB, CCFBC, Center City Form Base Code Two, Center City Planned Unit Development. We have a motion on the floor to, I'll learn to speak, excuse me. We have a motion on the floor that came from the December twelfth meeting. To adopt. And is there a representative of the applicant? There you are, you're fast.
Thank you, Mayor. Gunnar Joyce with Rieger Law Group on behalf of the applicant here, and I'm going to present on twenty-eight and twenty-nine, both of these are right next to each other, so I'll talk about them collectively to try and speed up discussion. It's 221 and 305 East Boyd, and as you can see there, the two properties are outlined in yellow. Just to kind of orient us, there's a multi-develop, multifamily development to the north that's under construction, we're north of Boyd, and we're east of Manette. And here's a current picture, shows that multifamily under construction, zoomed in a little bit more on these two properties. And the current zoning is Center City Form Base Code, and we're in the urban general section. We're requesting a rezoning of these two to CCPUD. Let me tell you a little bit about the timeline, I know we have talked about this with many of you going through the process, and as you just mentioned, we were going to be here in December, but we pushed. just mentioned, we were going to be here in December, but we pushed off for two months to allow, to kind of work through some very minor items to get across the finish line, and so I've got that proposal here tonight. But this property owner, this developer, has been invested in this section of Boyd Street for quite some time. He worked to acquire these lots, and at the time, they were the old platted 25-foot lots. And so he bought, I think, two in what is now the 221 and three of them in 305. And we worked through the city process to do lot line adjustments. So we take those multiple lots, we create two lots now to simplify the development and to more align with the vision of the Center City Form Base Code. After we got the lot line adjustments filed, we then began working on a site plan under the then Form Base Code guidelines in 2022. And then what happened was the buildings on the corner of Minnet were installed, and at the time, the required build line on Boyd was nine feet. We went through a process to make that three feet, and you guys are all aware of that. But this developer was watching that intimately because he was working on a design, and this went to planning commission, not this project, but the RBL move because of the building on the corner. And the proposal was that the RBL would be moved to three feet. This developer, watching it, was also kind of aware of the protest that that item received and was watching the planning commission hearing, and planning commission denied that move six to one in July of 2023. And so he knew he wanted to kind of meet the spirit of, of those neighbors, but also wanted to take advantage of some of the positive comments that planning commission did make. And then that city council actually reiterated the next month. So planning commission said no. City council next month said, yes, we actually do want three feet. And so Bill Was, the developer, caught in a little bit of a limbo trying to ride that wave out and, and meet the middle. And so what he did was filed these two CCPUDs in September of 2023 in what he believed to be a middle ground requesting six feet. So not the nine feet that he originally planned at for over a year, not the three feet because of the planning commission denial and the protest that was received. We went to planning commission with the proposal for a six-foot build line and were approved at planning commission and also received no protests, worked with the protesting neighbors. But then reached out to many of you at city council and learned that you were not in favor of that middle ground six feet, but instead would rather see matching the intent of a three-feet RBL up and down Boyd. Last time we were working through that, got all the way up to council in December, essentially through, you know, very transparent communication, realized it would be best to take this two-month break and look at a design, see if we could find that midpoint. That's exactly what happened. So I'm happy to say now, tonight, the request to modify the RBL has been removed. So this project is at three feet, as you guys have approved in July. And we have also worked through some other items to make the ground floor of these town home projects more commercially adaptable in the future. So I'll walk through those items. Would like to point out that throughout this entire process, the move of the RBL and that dance this developer has done, there has been no protest on this project. So the map you're looking at was the RBL move not tied to us. We've never received any protest on this project. I will quickly just take you down the streetscape, because I know you saw this many times in those meetings we referenced. This is the existing building on the corner of Minnet and Boyd at three feet. That is the RBL that we are proposing, so we'll be building just like that to align with those two buil-, excuse me, those two buildings. And then here is the site plan. As you look farther to the east and you see that open field and then past that, that house that is built, we would be right there. So that's the site plan for these two projects. It, again, is, is a three-story townhome type of project. This is the original site plan. This is what went to planning commission, was approved by planning commission at six feet. So you got to watch closely as I click, because it's going to shift just slightly, but there's the change. We've come up now three feet to match with the RBL on the corner. We also have retained some of those variances that we've developed throughout the pro-, throughout the process to make the project more user-friendly and livable. One of those, as you can see here, is an allowance to go farther recessed into the building, which gives us those really gorgeous balcony spaces that are usable. You can get up to five feet of recession back for the, the door, the stoop, the cupboard elements, as opposed to the two feet that you would be allowed. So we believe that's a request that is more to the spirit, that we're going to have open usable space. I will just briefly call this, we're talking about both of them. The 221 is five units. It's five three-story vertical townhome units. The 305 to the east is seven units. We've also asked for additional density than what would be allowed. We believe this is a great area for density just north of the campus of OU and also in the time where we desperately need good housing, and this is an added density request, which we believe is appropriate to the area. So let me quickly walk you through the details of the CCPUD. Like I said, additional density than what's allowed by right. It allows four bedrooms, maximum of four bedrooms per unit. We no longer requesting a modification to the RBL. We're going to build it at three feet. We do propose usable open space, which if you look at some of the other buildings that are built in this area, the required open space and green space is really just strips of land along the parking space. Here, we're going to have on both of them, and see if you can see the clicker or not. There we go. This is an active kind of patio grill area, and then over here, we've got a dog park and then more active, you have patio benches and grill area. So it, it's open space. It obviously is tight to fit the required parking and to maximize density, but it does allow for usable open space and green space that the other projects of this type lack. We also have gone above and beyond on bike parking. There would be one bike rack per unit that is above what is required by code. We've also shared a dumpster and a shared parking arrangement to reduce pervious coverage throughout and to be creative in the, in the design to maximize, again, the usable green space. I mentioned the allowance for recessed elements that allow the building to go back farther for the balcony and the stoops. And then we have taken the last two months to really look at how we can make the ground floor units usable for commercial uses in the future. And the biggest portion of that is now the ceiling of the ground floor will be at a minimum no less than 10 feet. So it's a substantial change in what was originally in front of you. It'll be elevated ceilings. And let me go one more slide to talk a little more. There's a potential commercial retail space layout for the ground floor. The applicant and his architect have worked tirelessly on this in the last two months, and they're really excited about the potential this brings for live-work units. It really lends itself to somebody that could have an office space, a professional service, maybe a retail on the ground floor with the living up above it. The elevated first-floor ceiling. We've also added substantial language about fire suppression to the CCPUDs in both of them. The design right now does not have any load-bearing walls for a residential layout on the ground floor. So it means if somebody is a second owner or later comes in and acquires a unit, they could retrofit it easily without having to take out any load-bearing walls, and it is ADA accessible within large ground floor doors. That's the last slide I have, so happy to take any questions. And from the applicant, we are extremely appreciative of the effort you guys have all done working through this, because it's been a very long and time-consuming process. I appreciate the efforts that you've given us. Thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Joyce. I was going to ask about the ADA accessible ramp, just because the conceptual drawing just looks like steps. Where is that ramp going?
I think it's, I don't know if you're able to look at the packet well, but there's a image of the rear that's in the packet that shows it. If I can get this pointer to come back up. There we go. This, this little white strip, very difficult to see, but right here is a white strip that is the ramp and then connects, and it's this white strip here is the ADA accessible ramps that would get from the, from the parking to the building.
And really just the ground floor units would be ADA accessible?
That's correct, right.
Okay. I do like the creative shared parking layout. I really appreciate the applicant working with us. It was a process, but here we are.
Yep. We appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other, Councilmember Holman? Button's not working still. Okay, yes, we've talked about this project a lot, too. Okay, so the right-of-way that's in front of the buildings between Boyd Street and the sidewalk, there's currently overhead utility lines. I know the project on the corner, I think with their own money paid to have that buried, that's not what this one's proposing, is it?
So we've had that talk with the applicant, and we are going to try our best to do that in a financially feasible way. If at the end of the day, the only way a building permit is attainable is that those are buried, then that's very likely what will happen. And then we would look at creative financing situations where it may be possible, whether that's a request of Center City TIF funds, whether that's a dialogue just with that power company, or whether that's just private funding. But with moving the RBL all the way up to three feet, I think that's something that you can expect at the time this project's built.
Okay. I would definitely encourage our utility partners to take a look at that section, because along Boyd Street right there, there's only overhead utility lines from basically Royal Pipes and Tobacco, that alleyway east to the alleyway that's right behind the University Falls apartment. So it's a very small section of Boyd Street that even has that. And it has created issues for other developments and potential added cost as well. So, you know, I think that's a great example of how a utility partner could do a gesture of goodwill and help out a lot of people. And it would look a lot nicer, too, and allow that right-of-way to be, either have street parking or street trees. Is there a plan to put street trees in the right-of-way with this project?
So, so the CCPUDs specifically ask for that, that requirement to be lifted. Now, it doesn't mean that we've said we are not going to plant any landscaping or trees. There was substantial discussion about that at planning commission. Great points were made, both by staff and current commissioners. The, the difficulty with planting trees now that we bring the building all the way up to three feet is there are water and sewer utilities right there, and if you bury the power lines, they're also going to be right there. And so we've had this discussion many times with, with Richard McCown on other projects, where he actually would love to put trees there in what he calls the tree lawn. But a, a lot of times you run into, those roots grow out and then damage those utilities that are in place. And so we've asked that since the Center City Form Base Code was drafted, the time before the requirement was pushed up all the way to three feet, that we not be required, because we believe it'll cause issues with the existing utilities. But we have eight trees shown on both properties currently with expectations to do substantially more landscaping.
Okay. And then the units. So it's three stories and one unit is all three floors?
Correct.
Okay. So, and you said seven on one of them, five on the other?
Right. Seven on 305 Boyd, five on 221. And just like you said, one unit is the vertical townhome, three-story walk-up with allowance for each unit to have up to four bedrooms. So you could build it out with less, not more, but essentially the whole target here is, is added density.
You could have four bedrooms.
Correct.
Is there a bedroom on the first floor?
Yes, li- likely each one will have one. That, that has been basically the last two months of how do we design to where those bedrooms that are developed in the first phase of development don't remain bedrooms forever? And I think we've worked really hard with Councilmember Peacock on how do we make sure we've not locked out the potential for commercial on Boyd, so that when more density, more demand, and maybe, you know, more street-friendly infrastructure projects on Boyd happen, now that ground floor be a great coffee shop, you know, retailer, whatever. We think we've done that really well by lifting the required ground floor elevation and not having any load-bearing walls.
Okay. And so the buildings are all ADA accessible, as you confirmed, Councilmember Grant, but it also means that someone can access it, but there'll, there'll actually be a bedroom that they could use in, in there, too.
Absolutely, correct.
They're not all on the second and third floor.
Right.
Perfect. Okay, that's all the questions I had.
Thank you.
All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on this item. Do we have anybody signed up?
Stephen Ellis.
Thank you.
Okay. Cheryl Ann Dinsel.
Well, the only observation I have is that person in the middle between these two lots will never see the sun rise nor set on the east or west, which is kind of sad to think about, but life marches on. Thank you.
Chelsea Gravel. Corlinda.
Anything else from council? Hearing none. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 29, an ordinance rezoning property located at 221 East Boyd Street from CCFBC, Center City Form Base Code, to CCPUD, Center City Planned Unit Development. We have a motion to adopt on the floor from the December 12th meeting.
It's the same people, Stephen? No? Cheryl Ann?
Okay, good. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance-
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously. I misspoke earlier, that was, the last vote was on second reading.
Plus closing costs, authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute any documents on behalf of the city of Norman to effectuate the transaction and appropriation of general fund balance. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the contract and subsequent authorization and appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Change spots, and hopefully I can remember how to work the mouse. Am I going the right way? Yes. It's easier with a laptop. Okay. This will be a review of what you've seen before, really, but we've talked to council a couple of different times in executive session about the opportunity to purchase the property at 5451 Hutner Drive. This is a picture of the properties you can see now. It's hard to see on the screen, but the little blue dot is the parcel we're talking about here, north of Johnson Controls and sort of east of the Extended Stay Hotel. It's 6.17 acres. It was listed for a million dollars. They shared their appraisal with us. It was $900,000. It was $940,000. This is completely undeveloped property, as you see. They had come forward for council a couple of years ago to have it rezoned as a PUD for use as an upscale RV park. It allowed for other uses as well, and my understanding is they have alternate plans where they could develop this property in accordance with those uses. Here you can see the property again with its zoning, pink denoting the PUD. Purchase price, as I said, $940,000. We would be depositing $25,000 as earnest money. From that point on, we would have 60 days to inspect the property. During that time, if we couldn't finish our inspections within the 60 days, we could extend that upon written notice to the seller and get another 30 days. And we can terminate at any time prior to the end of that inspection period and get the money returned to us that we've paid. During that time, we would be intending to do our due diligence inspections because of the proximity to industrial sites, and environmental survey is really important for this property. And we would also be setting the closing date post-inspection period. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Hearing none.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak.
Diana Hutzel.
Diana Hutzel, Ward five. Purchasing the property is not the fiscally responsible thing to do tonight. It's about the money, not about what it's the purpose. At the Finance Committee meeting on the 18th of January, Mr. Francisco Norman, Finance Director, told City Council that City Norman will spend $4.8 million more than it will generate in revenue this year. He also told council, and I quote, "We're going to be drawing down the general fund balance, spending more than we're taking in, in each of the next five fiscal years, to the extent that if our projections are exactly right, we will have wiped out our fund balance four years from now," end quote. At its current rate of spending, much of which is recurring year-to-year, Norman will go from a $13.4 million surplus to broken four years. The $940,000 to buy this land is not included in that $4.8 million deficit, nor does that deficit include a multitude of other projects council is actively pursuing this year, including but not limited to the $300,000 to renovate and expand the Gray Street Shelter and the increased contract costs to run it, the $360,000 to fund a recurring litter collection outreach contract, and the $6 million to buy the must-have Griffin property. This deficit also does not include the unplanned and as of yet undisclosed and potentially non-reimbursable costs the city is fronting to repair the Main Street Library. That money is coming from the city's rainy day fund, which, as of the finance meeting on the 18th of January, is already $655,000 short of its targeted fund balance. At the special session meeting on the 6th of February, council was given a $60 million capital improvement project wish list for next year. However, projections during that meeting show that Norman will actually have less than $300,000 available to next year for any new capital improvement projects. Council cannot look to sales tax increases in the near term to reduce the funding gap. The recently passed grocery tax bill prohibits municipalities from raising their sales tax rates until at least July 2025. Additionally, it's unlikely that property tax owners will help the city reduce the funding gap by approving another property tax hike in the near term, given the recent 20-year, $50 million bridge bond and the ongoing controversy over what was promised versus what's being delivered. The Cleveland County Treasurer's website shows the city already owns over 360 parcels of land, ranging in size from under an acre to over 150 acres. Has the city evaluated each of these for potential use? Each property purchased by the city is a lost opportunity for private investment and potential sales tax revenue. Taxpayers haven't even been asked yet whether they would consider funding the building of a permanent shelter, even if this land were purchased. The property's been on the market for over a year. I believe it can wait. Council needs to take a strategic pause, evaluate current obligations and expenditures, and start to make changes to reverse Norman's negative financial trajectory now. Tough choices need to be made, including delaying scaling back undercutting projects. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Stephen Ellis.
I'm also opposed to this proposal, but for the other reason, because I don't think it's a very good deal for unhoused folks. If you vote for this proposal to locate a shelter so far from services, then you're going to need to be prepared to dump a ton more money into relocating those services and then completely reorganizing Norman's transit options. None of that's even been discussed, much less committed to. And we learned, somewhat weirdly, in the discussion of crimes committed by a pair of homeowners, that Norman just does not have adequate resources to handle services for the poor, the mentally ill, the addicted, and the like already. Moving what we have and incurring those costs out to the boonies will make things worse. The perfect may be in conflict with the good, but to pretend is the real enemy. It's a fantasy to think we're going to be able to move this out there and then be able to afford to make things better for unhoused people. It's clear that the number-one priority of this location is assuaging the worries of some local businesses. As someone who thinks the priority should be on the neediest, that actually kind of goes down hard with me. But this proposal will be exposed to something worse than just poor priorities, really a sham, merely performative, if it doesn't actually improve the situation of the unhoused, and that's going to take a lot of money. The current shelter, on the other hand, is in a... No, I can still hear myself. Good, wait. There's no time up here, so. The current shelter is in a good location for serving the unhoused. It has room to expand. If you prioritize the unhoused, expanding Gray Street is the way to go. If you prioritize business owners, but you really do care about the unhoused as well, you're going to have to open the city's checkbook. So I suggest we just keep things on Gray Street and expand the property. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Marguerite Larson.
I have several concerns about this property. Concern number one is I think it's overpriced, which I have already mentioned. Concern number two, you're paying for something that you're not committed to. There has been absolutely no commitment from any of you that there's going to be a permanent shelter, that there's going to be transportation for the unhoused, that there's going to be services out there. No commitment whatsoever. You're investing in something supposedly, as I think, to cover something else or to maybe invest and get proceeds later on, should you decide to sell it to somebody else. I don't think this is a good idea. I don't think this is the place for the shelter, and I am very concerned that what you're promoting is really not what your intention is. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Andrew Golden.
Hello, Andrew Golden. I own the property of 5450 Huttner. Been there for about 12 years, and I've had a homeless problem out there. I've had drugs out there, I've had people defecating out in front of my place. So I've gone through that. I am not against helping the homeless at all, and I'll read what I think, what I want. But I thought, I'm sure that almost everyone in Norman has some empathy for the homeless, although I've since learned that there are two opposing views and forces. Some feel that we should do our part in a conscientious way. Others want to appear like they are concerned, although not in a realistic manner. Pardon me, Mayor. As our mayor stated in the video I saw, he said he'd like to have a homeless shelter out by the lake. I guess I'm a little slow because I didn't know which lake, Lake Dallas, Lake Eufala, or Lake Thunderbird, if it's just a matter of getting them away from us. The lake is out of the question, I suppose. So then I decided the location, though they decided the best location... No, I'm sorry. I suppose they decided on a location at an industrial park at the far edge of Norman with absolutely no services in regards to infrastructure. Where is the feasibility study to support the $940,000 to purchase this? I was involved in, when Joe Carter came to me to get the new animal shelter, and him and I had to allocate and put up our money for the bond issue in order to get that. I'm not, I am very charitably oriented to many things, so I don't want you to think, and including the homeless, I feel. I own the property, own property all over Norman, own several businesses, and I pay a lot of taxpayer dollars to have something done. I can live with something that is thought, that is throughout, you know, it's thought through, and it's reasonable. The only word I can come up with this is it's wrong. My neighbors in the area that I've talked to are all opposed to this, including, I found out about this from people that live behind our property, in actual homes, and they were against it. That's, this thing's been so quiet. Matter of fact, when Channel Five covered me, covered my, the first time, in '23, I mean, July '23, they showed my building as being the new homeless shelter, the red building out there. And I tried to get a rebuttal from them.
You brought that out of the times.
Juliette Golden.
Thank you for doing that.
Hi, I'm Juliette Golden. I live on Ward four. But our family business is located at 5450 Huttner Drive, Andy was talking about that. In speaking to you today, I want to note the following. We first heard about the city's plans to purchase the property across the street on January 23rd, the day the item was first put on the agenda. No one from the city has approached any of the owners in the area to understand our businesses, to understand our neighborhood, our concerns as citizens and taxpayers, or even our readiness to help. The location is right next to Johnson Controls Plant. Our neighborhood operates as an extension of this industrial site. Apart from our manufacturing facility and warehouse, in the area, we have a car repair workshop, a youth gymnastics centers, a lawn care equipment sales company, and a long-term stay facility occupied by individuals and families. Many of us follow the homeless situation in Norman. We are all impacted by this growing problem, and we recognize the city must take practical steps to wisely and compassionately respond to this urgent challenge. However, Huttner Drive is not a suitable location and solution. It is remote, located far away from a range of city services needed for the proper functioning of such an operation like a homeless shelter. Because of its isolation, the homeless shelter located there will put the brunt of the burden on those small number of businesses operating in the area and the individuals living and working in the area. According to Google Maps, depending on the route, the Huttner site is 5.2 to 6.3 miles from the main post office or this building where we are tonight. It takes between one hour and 54 minutes and two hours and 18 minutes to walk to the site from the center of the Norman. Most of the route does not have sidewalks or bike paths that link the area with any part of Norman. It is located between I-35 and the railroad tracks. The site does not offer any infrastructure or services. Some questions. In our exchanges with some of the city council members, it became clear that some have never visited the site. Have all of the council members visited this site by now in preparation for this discussion or for this vote? Many of us on Huttner have asked ourselves if this shelter will alleviate the homeless crisis in Norman. Given the fact that it is so remote, will it indeed be sought out by people experiencing homelessness? Won't many experiencing homelessness opt to stay in the city to have access to public infrastructure, healthcare, shopping, retail services? Finally, apart from the money to purchase the property and build a facility on the Huttner site, how much money in public funds will be needed to bring the necessary infrastructure to this site, such as public transport, sidewalk, health facilities, and public safety services? Without such considerations and investments, the burden of the shelter will not be shared equally by the residents of Norman, but instead will fall disproportionately on the property owners, renters, and residents of Huttner Drive. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Russell. Russell Rice.
During today, Russell Rice, Ward two. Let me pull it up, sorry. Forgot. Actually wrote something this time. All right, so, are there any Norman homeless experts in the room? Norman-area homeless experts, any?
Just me?
I'm the only one? Is that a safe bet? Well, this Norman-area homeless expert does not recommend this area for a shelter. I also don't recommend you spend a million dollars on the general fund, but that doesn't have to do with homeless area, you know. Here, also, the transparency on this has been kind of, not even kind, it's been wrong. Most people didn't even realize that there was the potential to vote for a homeless shelter on the agenda tonight, until one of y'all said it in their opening remarks. I don't remember who that was, but if you're going to put a homeless shelter on the agenda, do it validly. Let all the COC members come and talk about it. Don't try and do this wishy-washy stuff where you buy a piece of property and then you get here and you find out that somebody has plans to turn it into an all-inclusive homeless shelter, is the way it was referred to, to me, sorry. So, yeah, I hope you all vote no. All of you, most of you vote no. We know one won't. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
Caleb Creed.
So, I support the purchasing of the property, provided that it has an MOU for a service that isn't the homeless shelter. I obviously support the creation of a shelter, but not here. I'm guessing this location is chosen because it's far away from everyone, and the advantage of this is that the abject misery that accompanies being without a home can be contained out of sight of most of us. It seems like this is a strategy of hiding and containing the miserable. Sometimes that's meant jails, sometimes that's meant other institutions, sometimes that means isolating people who are experiencing this on the periphery of our community. And maybe this is the exact problem with the way we see homelessness here. We see them as something other than us, other than community members, other than human. If we were to humanize the unhoused, we would understand that a homeless shelter here would fail even the dehumanizing mission that this kind of isolation is intended to achieve. Humans, after all, have bodies that must be fed, treated for medical problems, treated for mental health issues, body that must move through the city and occupy space along the way. Will it really solve anyone's problem to have a mass of unhoused traveling miles through the city to services? Certainly not the unhoused themselves, but will it even solve the problem of those who complain about the unhoused? Those who have recognized with some clarity the misery that accompanies this dehumanization? Those that report and regularly document the symptoms of that dehumanization? Not to humanize, but to further dehumanize, further stigmatize, and further misericordia? Those who describe in lurid detail the bathroomless urinating, or those who have nothing but public space, doing things in public spaces? Will even those people be happy with this choice? When our community members lose homes, they become transformed by some sort of mental trick into something other than humans. And have we chosen this spot because we're doubling down on this cruel misunderstanding? And does it point to a solution? What would we do if these were our aunts and our brothers and our wives? We would locate them within our community, both in relation to us and in our spaces. We would prioritize their care, we would build support and community, we would emphasize their healing, we would become curious about our fellow humans who have lost their homes, more than 40% of whom have disabilities directly contributing to their homelessness. People who we could easily humanize when they were special needs students in our beautifully humanizing special education classrooms, but who are effectively dumped from that care into the cruelty of being both disabled and without homes. We humanize people not just to be kind, but because when problems involve humans, we need to understand what humans are, and dehumanization cuts against that and leads to alien and strange decisions like this one.
Thank you, sir.
Cynthia Rogers.
Me again, still Ward four. It's tough to follow Caleb. In urban economics, we talk about location, location, location. It's important for where businesses locate, it's important for where you put airports, where you put roads, and it's especially important for people that don't have resources, people that don't have cars, people that either walk, maybe ride a bike, or use public transit. This location fails on all three accounts. I would not, I ride my bike all over Norman. I have an e-bike, so I cheat a little bit. I couldn't ride my bike safely there. Not at all. There's no sidewalks, it's not close to anything, and we're talking about putting people who have the least access to transportation, to mobility, far, far away from the have the least access to transportation, to mobility, far, far away from the places they need to go. And I don't see the budget having the capacity to actually provide this sort of transportation and mobility that they would need to get jobs, to get healthcare, to get counseling, to get drug treatment. None of that. So, this would be a horrible place to put it, and it would be a waste of our money to even propose putting it there. So, please vote no.
Thank you, ma'am.
Michael Undercuffler.
Good evening, my name is Michael Undercuffler. I absolutely agree we have a major problem with how the homeless are handled right now, but to relocate them to, to this location is not the solution.
Sir, where do you live?
I'm sorry?
What, what ward do you live in?
Seven.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Eleven years ago, Victory Gymnastics established a location at 5721 Hootner Drive to serve as a place for young children to learn new skills, build friendships, experience new endeavors, and encourage them to be the very best that they can be, very much like what is done at school. Like schools, safety is of utmost, of utmost importance. Protecting our youth should be at the forefront of everyone's agenda. When the city of Norman relocated its homeless to downtown Norman, private citizens and businesses noticed an increase in crime and disturbances, and this has caused many issues and resulted in where we are today. That said, the city's plan to relocate the homeless to Hootner Drive exposes the children who attend Victory Gymnastics to the violence and unsafe atmosphere that comes with being so close to a homeless shelter. Many sex offenders find themselves homeless due to limitations of not living near schools or being denied housing because of their convictions. Oklahoma state law prohibits sex offenders from permanently or temporarily residing within 2,000 feet of a school. This is for the safety of the children. While Victory Gymnastics is not classified as a school, over 475 young girls between the ages of three and 17 attend regularly. On weekends of competitive meets, over 900 girls attend over the course of the weekend. Victory Gymnastics is only 1,160 feet from the proposed homeless shelter location. These classes take place primarily in the evenings outside of school hours and often after dark. Victory Gymnastics must already combat the trespassers and loiterers from the residents at the Extended Stay America next to the proposed site that houses primarily low-income guests. We ask the members of the council to consider the safety of these children in your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Michael Blunk.
Good evening, can you guys, sorry about that connection. How's that? Okay. Uh, Michael Blunk, Development Ward One. I have moved, yeah. It's been nice so far, I've been digging it. So, we've already covered quite a few details already, but I want to go ahead and add some numbers to give us some more context. When it comes to that specific parcel, uh, so I went ahead and checked out the county assessor's website, so we have in our proposal tonight, that's being sold for just under a million dollars, but according to the county assessor's site, that's only being listed, that parcel's only been listed at, uh, six, uh, 600,007, sorry, 674,091 dollars? That's like a 265,990, sorry, $909 difference from the market rate, that's the market value being put there by, uh, by the county assessor. Now, unless the county assessor just does not update their public-facing website, that might be an issue that the county should address. But if that's accurate information and the parcel that we are talking about potentially, even if we're just putting earnest dollars towards, to an inspection for, if we still keep at this rate of purchase, we would be purchasing a piece of property that is underdeveloped, already would be away from services, and would, we'd be spending almost like, you know, at least 265, you know, thousand dollars more than we have in, for, for a piece of property that we'd have to put more money into. So not only is it cruel to put people on the edge of town to say they don't need the services they need, not only does it not solve the problems of homelessness or get anyone any kind of mental health services if something is out there, right? But on top of that, we'd be, we buying a limit of a piece of property. Like, it, it's just a waste of money. Uh, I, I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm someone who cares about social issues, I care about working people and poor families, and any of us could be unhoused in a moment, but just on its face, this is a bad deal. It's just, like, it's bad. But on that other note, moving back forward to it, right? We also talked about, again, the real issue, which is that if we care about taking care of unhoused people, then, and if we have a legitimate financial issue with our budget in town moving forward, then the financially responsible and the morally correct decision is to put these resources elsewhere into, I don't know, expanding the shelter we have currently on Gray Street. Making sure that building is, is usable and can house more people there. On a final note, previously when that cold snap came through, and again, we don't have the, we're not seeing any, any time there, so how close are we?
Ninety seconds.
Ninety seconds, thank you, mayor, I gotcha. So, final note, back in January...
Nine. I couldn't figure out how many fingers. Thank you, sir.
Paul Wilson.
Can I get a 30-second countdown when it's?
No, sir.
Hi, guys, Paul Wilson, Ward One. I'm opposed to this mainly because of the location. I mean, if we're gonna use a homeless shelter out there, it's away from services, and unless the city's willing to pay $9 for every Uber that brings those homeless people to the city center, and that's gonna be a lot of people, we're gonna be spending a chunk of money bringing them to the, uh, services that they need. On top of that, who's gonna use it? If you're unhoused, how are you gonna get there? You're not gonna go out there. You, you wanna keep near the, the services. I know Moore doesn't have a homeless issue, um, but if you go to the next city north of us, Oklahoma City, we all know they have a huge homeless problem. Where are all their shelters? Literally within a mile of downtown. I go by there every day. So why are we trying to put them in the boonies? It's not right, it won't get used, it's not fiscally responsible. I mean, I wanna help them too, I'd rather put this million dollars in the Gray Street. I know that it's been discussed in, uh, study sessions, I'd rather see 940,000 dollars go towards Gray Street. It's in downtown, and regardless of what people think, as been stated many times, Norman has had a homeless shelter in downtown for years. Before food and shelter moved to Reed Street, it was current, its, its location was literally where the well is. Now, now it's at Gray Street before that Comanche. Well, now Gray Street, the city owns. It's already owns it. We don't have to buy property. Just improve it, put more beds. I know it's on a lot of people's ideas from council, 'cause I was there, I watched it, I listened to it. I was actually happy that you guys thought about renovating and expanding the facility at Gray Street. I mean, why don't we keep pushing this down the, kicking this can down the road? Yeah, something might come up in the future that could be better, like when we, if we happen to get the Griffin property, we can move it over there by food and shelter. That's an outstanding spot for it. And then we can do what we want with Gray Street. But until then, don't put them out in the middle of nowhere. It's, it's not right. There is literally no resources for them out there. So please, vote no on this. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Cheryl Ann Dinsel.
Cheryl Ann Dinsel, Wards Four and Six. Okay, so, downtown Norman is, uh, and the business owners there are the heart and soul of this community. It's why we, we are, have the moniker of the city of festivals, because we hold a lot of festivals, a lot of events downtown Norman. Our downtown Norman, uh, business owners are, are suffering right now with the shelter where it's at. The capacity of the shelter is overrun. We have more people that need housing than we have capacity for. That building will never be what we aspire it to be, okay? We have to start somewhere, we have to have more room to expand. If we had a bigger piece of property, I'm not saying where, I'm just saying if we had a bigger piece of property, then services could be located on that property. This is a first step. We have to be able to invest in something, move somewhere, move that needle somewhere to have a more comprehensive plan for this crisis that we're in right now. I've been saying this for months, to have, come up with a comprehensive plan like San Antonio did, like some other cities in North Carolina did, with the partnering with private, public, and institutional, like universities, coming together to work on this problem. We can't do it just by ourselves. The taxpayer dollars can't do it by itself. Charities can't do it by itself. It's gotta be a comprehensive plan. This is one step for that comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chelsea Gravel.
Chelsea Gravel, Ward Four. This location has some interesting features with the York Plant, the Extended Stay Hotel right there, and the jail just across the street. Zoning being a pud, the lower level could offer potential tenants jobs. It sounds like a few potential options for jobs and housing, just to add a few extra embark stops. In order to get people help and off the streets, we must have a facility that provides enough beds. Will this be the help we're looking for? With the asylums shut down and the hospitals that didn't pick up the bill, and no private entity getting involved to guarantee oversight when providing care to our community, hospitals have limited resources, prisons experience overcrowding and have to release people, felons struggle to find jobs, jobs are easy to lose, minimum wage won't pay the bills, education is expensive, housing prices are too high, even when Oklahoma housing prices are nationally low and they are still too high, even with a degree. Having a job that pays the bills is hard to find. Fast food and minimum wage jobs are not meant for, they're meant for students, not to provide for a family. This generation is lazy and doesn't want to work. Drugs are easier to find now than they have ever been. Dealers come into communities that purchase drugs. We can all agree that no one should have to live on the streets. According to the Constitution, everyone has the right to a bed. But why has the city involving themselves in pursuing this project if that's flipping the property or building a shelter? Citizens have already voted against a shelter, and yet you must take every effort to go against the people. Our city involvement in purchasing and potential plans for this property goes against the responsibilities of city council to work to improve and maintain streets and infrastructure. Whatever happens moving forward, the city should not be involved in anything on this matter. Norman doesn't have the money to handle this burden. Norman will be out of money and water in five years at this rate, according to your own voices. I look forward to seeing this go before the people, so we'll at least have an opportunity to vote on a shelter again. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Carlinda.
Council Mayor, Carlinda Gravel, Ward Four. So first, I would like to thank you for your considerations to our downtown businesses who have made it abundantly clear how they are struggling. They've signed petitions, they've given you surveys, so I do believe that the location could definitely work in regards to our downtowns and how our downtown is struggling. However, so you've been taking into consideration, we also have now the property owners there that have voiced their concerns here to take into consideration, which are already struggling with some issues. So I think as we can see, it's not just about location here, it's about much, much more. We have a low-barrier, no-barrier shelter, we've lost our mental health facilities, people who do not want to get drug rehabilitation, as the individual stated at the encampment, are not required to, they're allowed to loiter our street, shoot up in public, defecate, urinate, and do everything they can. We're short-staffed with our police department, there's not enough staffing for that, what are they gonna do when they do encounter an individual? We have a lot more issues here than just the location of the shelter. So I'd like to point out to you that, that that location is also near a community Christian school, I'm not sure how close it is, but as we take into consideration that identifications are not required and individuals can sign in with a fake name, may not be able to identify a registered sex offender, and we plan, we have studies that plan for our stop signs. We do hundred thousand dollar studies for one single stop sign. I realize that you did the GAPS analysis, even though the citizens voted no on funding a shelter, but there is so much more at stake here than just a location. The way it's being done now in Gray Street cannot continue that way. Any place you put it, it will destroy the community. Other things have to be considered. For example, the PIT count made it clear that it was inaccurate as according to numbers, it's just to monitor year by year what's happening in that community. Our PIT count in January 23 was 213. We had 639 individual homeless people arrested in the city of Norman during the year of 2023. How many beds are we gonna provide? If we don't provide enough beds for every single homeless individual residing in Norman, they are legally allowed to sleep on the benches in front of the businesses in our downtown area. That's what's legal. So what, we don't even have accurate numbers. How many beds are you gonna provide? If you don't provide enough, we're gonna be in the same boat we're in now. Those are things I would like to bring to your attention as you make this decision, and I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That concludes our public comment.
All right. Any further comments from council? Oh, you wanna take a break now before we vote? Vote. All right, I just have one thing to say, I, I do have a comment from, from me. A lot of... We don't have a plan. We're gonna buy a piece of property and we're gonna make another fit to it. Would it not be a better solution to look at the things that want to happen? We know that JCI would like to buy that property, they didn't know that they could buy it before then, now that we put in an offer and all the rest of that's gone, it's come up on their radar, they're willing to buy that piece of property. So it will be used to expand one of our wonderful employers that we have here. We don't have a plan as to what kind of facility's gonna be on there. I just don't think we need to spend the money without an impact study, without all kinds of things that need to go in there, we need to go in there more informed. Uh, I would ask that you vote against this, if you would. Anyway, anything else from council? Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, with this property, for a long time, many of us have said out to the public and in public meetings that if you have any ideas or suggestions for where a shelter could be relocated, please let us know. And that's how this property came about, is a resident property owner in Norman sent us this and said, hey, here's a piece of property that's probably big enough, and it's not near any residential, and it might not get most protests, but as we know, and through my experience through the years, every single solution that we've proposed, this is the response that we've got to it, every single one. And so, a resident suggested this property, so we sent to the city manager, investigate this property, see what it would cost, and go from there. City manager pile, I don't know, do you have an idea of how many properties we've asked you to look at over the years? I mean...
Dozens, and, and actually for, uh, over the course of a year, our Community Development Block Grant Fund, staff members made contact with virtually every property owner in the downtown area looking for that opportunity, and we found one, and that worked for a handful of months, and that, uh, building owner lost their insurance on the building for the type of occupancy, so, uh, we were right back at it.
But you, city staff at the direction of council, has been looking for land or existing buildings for a number of years, is that right?
Correct.
And so, I agree with the comments that have been made pretty much by everybody tonight. Uh, I do not think this property is ideal either, uh, for the reasons that's mentioned, that it's not near services, it could be costly to provide transportation seven days a week, 12 hours... Could be costly to provide transportation seven days a week, 12 hours a day to and from that place. The situation that I found myself in is that we've had no other options. Nobody has offered any other property in this entire city for us to consider, or said, hey, not Hootner, look at this one. There is one, if I think you're the same person I'm thinking of, that we are looking at that would probably be more suitable for affordable housing, but we've been looking everywhere. And my personal opinion, that I've made public many times, is I think the Griffin property is the most logical location. It's near food and shelter, it's near the Health Department. The county Health Department's not moving. It's staying where it's at, on 12th Avenue in Maine. Other state-run services are in that area that are not planning to leave with the Griff... and we don't know what's happening with Griffin property. Honestly, it's like a stalemate, or they're ghosting us because they announced this decision that they're building a new hospital in Oklahoma City early last year, and then nothing's happened. There's been no groundbreaking in Oklahoma City for it. I've heard Kirkpatrick Foundation stopped running their sponsored ads about it on Facebook. So I don't know what's happening. They could solve this problem for us right now, if they could just carve out a little sliver of property over there for us. And I'll say, before we decided to locate the shelter on Gray Street, we had, we were this close to an agreement with the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse on an empty building in the middle of the Griffin property that they are not using for anything. It's not near anything, and it's close to food and shelter, and nobody lives over there, but it was 950 feet away from the Lamont School. And so the Lamont School parents protested. Even though Lamont School located in that area after Food and Shelter for Friends was already built across the street, and they located in an area that's had social services in it for over 100 years. So that frustrated me, because all of a sudden, the State Department of Mental Health, I don't know who called them in power and told them, don't make that deal with the city of Norman, but it got pulled right out from under us. I felt like that was a great location. Again, it was in the middle of the Griffin campus, close to food and shelter, close to the Health Department. People that stayed there would not need to be walking through anybody's neighborhood or walking through downtown to reach the things that they need, but that was pulled out from under us. And we were left with the only option being, what buildings do we own that we could use? And the Gray Street building over here was being used for box storage. There was a bunch of storage in there from years and years of city stuff. And so the decision was kind of, do we use this building to house boxes, or to use it to shelter people from the elements that we know are pretty harsh in Oklahoma? So it's extremely frustrating that every option that we've looked at, every suggestion that we've looked at, has been met with a brick wall at every single turn. And it's clear, I mean, nobody wants this anywhere near them. I've heard a lot of people say, yeah, I support the shelter, just don't put it next to my house or my business. Put it next to somebody else's house. So I just, I continue to be frustrated about it, because, again, I don't like this location at all, but when this went to a vote of the people four years ago, there was no location identified, there was no plan at all, and it was put together at the last minute because a global pandemic had just started. And we kind of anticipated, there would probably be a lot of people, they're gonna find themselves homeless over the next few years, and we're right. It's happening nationally. And so we tried to plan ahead then. That vote did fail by about 300 votes citywide, in one of the largest turnout elections we've ever had. It was the one item out of the four bond proposals that actually almost did pass, and did garner support in multiple of the wards, including my own. And so I've seen other city projects fail a vote of the people before, because there was no plan and because there was no location. It happened with the original library in 2008. There was no location identified, and voters said no. In 2015, a Norman Ford came up, a location was identified, and the city already owned it, and that, and it passed, you know, with a large package of other projects. So part of the thinking for me has been, this location was suggested by a resident who was trying to help at our request. We have no other options on the table that we've, that are available. We need somewhere, and for me, this is a land purchase. And could a shelter be the use there? Yes. Could it be the future home of Red Rock? Yes. Could it be the future home of a county sobering center? Yes. Maybe it could be all three of those, maybe it's two of those, maybe it's one of those. But that's been my thinking on this, is that I wouldn't wanna just put a shelter there by itself. I absolutely think that if we did do that, it would have to have some kind of medical wraparound services that are there with it. It could not just be an isolated shelter out in the middle of nowhere. So that is where this came from, again. And from my perspective, when we talked about this in committee, you know, city staff said we would have 90 days if we approved this tonight, that we could back out of this deal at any time, and not lose anything. If in that 90 days, somebody from the public or a group of citizens that were looking at properties citywide came to us and said, hey, council, we've identified this location that would be much better, we think, then we could back out of this deal, and we could go with that instead. But right now, we've not been given any other option. We haven't been able to find any other options, and we're, this is like a last resort, and I could promise you, I would not support this at all if it wasn't a last resort. And now, I came into this meeting thinking, this is the only option we have. I don't like this, but I, if I vote no, then what are we doing? We're just standing still, not doing anything yet, staying with what we have, which people complain about. So tonight, though, I've only heard one person speak in favor of this purchase. So now I'm faced with the situation of, it's our only option, nobody has suggested any other options, but nobody's in favor of it either, including people that are for shelter and people that are maybe against a shelter, both don't seem to want this property, so... I feel frustrated, I feel Councilor Ball's frustration, Councilreforman, and everybody's frustration about how we keep coming up with something and it keep running into these roadblocks. So just to reiterate, I don't like this property, I don't want to purchase this property. I do feel like if we did purchase it, and we wanna build a shelter, that's gonna require a vote of the people to fund the construction of a shelter. And if that were to fail, then we'd have an empty piece of property that apparently our largest employer, private employer, wants to buy. So it seemed like we'd have options to where we could build a shelter, maybe if voters approve it. If not, we'd have a valuable piece of property that's on the front edge of the highway, that's probably not gonna decrease in value. And I was looking, the distance, I don't know what the, and Community Christian has like two locations, but the one that's right by here with their football field and stuff, I mean, is, from property line to property line is 950 feet, basically, from the edge of the Community Christian School. So I don't know what kind of impact that would have either. Some of the positives that people have mentioned is that when people are released from the jail, we see that a lot, people that are arrested in South Oklahoma City, which is in Cleveland County, or in Moore, or Lexington, or Noble, or anywhere, they get brought to the Cleveland County Jail in Norman. And when they're released, the Lexington Police Department doesn't drive up here and pick them up and take them back to Lexington, they're just released out into the wild, basically. And so one of the pros of this would be that those folks who might otherwise be homeless when they're released from jail, might have an opportunity to access a shelter that's in this location. But yeah, there's not, there's really no great positive side to this, other than we don't have any other options that we've been given, and if we could sit and just maintain the Gray Street shelter, and hope that the state gets off their butt and does something with the Griffin property, and figures out what they wanna do, or we continue looking for property, hoping we find the perfect one, but I don't think we're going to. So, I don't know. I, I'm very frustrated by this. So, anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Nash, did you want a comment?
Uh, I'm just gonna agree with...
Wrong way. I saw Nash, and it was actually Grant.
Okay.
My, Councilmember Grant.
Yes, I have a question for staff. As I understand it, we're voting on the option to explore buying this property, with us finding it maybe not suitable for what we're looking for, which I'll clarify later. We could pull out at the end of a 90-day period.
Right. You're voting on the purchase and sales agreement tonight. Within that contract, it allows for 60 days to inspect the property and do your due diligence. We can provide written notice and gain another 30 days. And if within that 90-day period, we decide, for whatever reason, that we don't wanna move forward, we could terminate the agreement and get our earnest money back.
And to that last point, potentially a termination moving forward, that would, or even just buying it, like after we get done exploring it, this still has to come before council again, correct?
No.
Oh.
Not for a vote. Sorry.
We would ask, no, I'd ask Mr. Francisco. Would we need an appropriation?
We've got that as part of the item tonight. Yeah.
We're set.
Yeah, so we would be able to, if, but then, we would come back to council certainly before the end of the 60 days, to see if you wanted to extend another 30, and then determine whether or not you wanted to continue on after that, but it would not require another vote of council. We would be able to set a closing date.
And then another point was, this item I could see would be confusing for the community, as it wasn't really agendized to, with our intent. And I know that we had these conversations in executive session, so for the community that doesn't get to be present, you get, didn't get to hear that. But we had talked about Red Rock Behavioral Health Center, I can talk about that, right?
Sure.
And potentially co-locating a sobering shelter, which is ultimately what I would like to see come forward out of this. I also agree, it's not an appropriate location for a homeless shelter, although I see, when our feds, it would be SAMSA is what I call them, but Substance Mental Health Abuse Administration Services, hopefully got that right. They do have a criteria, key elements for reentry for people leaving from prison, which include access to services like a sobering center, actually safe, affordable housing, employment. But the Red Rock portion interests me, because it's not only a 23-hour stabilization, it's also inpatient outpatient services, which, you know, it sounds ideal to be next to something that is also a sobering center. So I am supportive of investigating potentially those resources, but I think if we're still talking about this, and we do vote to like explore, I would probably pull out if it is gonna be a homeless shelter, honestly, and would be a hard no. And to that point, I also think that there is potential for this land to be sold if we're not going to be using it, but if we pull out for the 90 days, we don't even have to mess with that. I would say us talking about this has brought forward some other land options, and so I don't think continuing on this path to explore is necessarily a bad option, 'cause that shows we are actually looking, and thinking about how these pieces are supposed to fit together across the city. So I hope if other people are listening, with land that could be a permanent supportive housing or affordable housing solution, you know, it might not be the shelter you think it is. Who knows? Maybe Griffin gets moved in. I know why we can't carve off a sliver, it's because state statute says that it has to be sold as one piece. That said, I do think that the citizen group that's looking for land is still looking around there, and so I do see options. Thank you.
All right, I wanna make this quick, 'cause I'm ready to get out of here. I'm gonna echo most of everything that Councilmember Holman had to say. I think there's a lot of positive things about this location, not least of which is that it's not right next to a neighborhood, it's gonna get a whole bunch of people out, and it's gonna have people coming out to protest, but not as many as anywhere else. Best location we could possibly have, that can get approval from both sides of the aisle. There is the hiccup of services, transportation, things that we do have control over, that we can address, but the proximity to the jail is one of the biggest perks in my mind, when people find themselves there and are released, then they have the option. They can either go back to that situation they were just, they just came from, or they've got this facility right down the road, and I'm not thinking like a 24-hour or overnight shelter, but a facility that's got all the services built into it, that's got places for their dogs and everything else, something that can actually go the full distance to help the homeless, something that we can't afford out of the general fund. So when we do come to that, that kind of plan, it's gonna have to go in front of the voters, and voters can choose whether or not they wanna have this constructed. But the elephant in the room is, can we afford it? And that's what I can't, I just can't get past that, even if this came fully complete with a homeless shelter already on it, that had a 100% success rate, we still can't afford it. And that's where I'm hung up on.
Councilmember Ford.
So when we talked about this in executive session, I was pretty snarky in that meeting, if I'm gonna be honest with you. I feel like we keep looking at things that we just spin our wheels, and we're not getting anywhere, we're not addressing the real problems. That's great that we could buy a piece of land. I know that in that session, we talked about what we could do with it if we bought it, and we didn't use it for that, and selling it, or whatever, but to me, that's just kicking the problem down the road. We're not addressing anything. If we buy land, we gotta what, get the public to support us, to build something on it? That doesn't help us at all. Everyone's just gonna be mad, no matter where we pick, so we can't even let that be the guiding factor too much, but I think it's a waste of time and money just to buy a piece of land. We need to find something commercial that we can transform, and go from there, and hit it hard and fast, and buying this just delays it. So I'm gonna be a no tonight.
Seeing no more questions? The motion on the floor is to approve the contract and the subsequent authorization and appropriation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion fails by a vote of two to seven, voting in favor, Councilmember Grant and Councilmember Ball.
Thank you. We're now gonna take a 10-minute break, if you'll be back here at 35. After, we'll finish with miscellaneous comments. After, we'll finish with miscellaneous comments. We got five. We're good. This is, the item is, this item is miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address City Council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
And we'll start with Diana Hutzel.
Evening. Diana Hutzel, again, Ward five. As a citizen, we're blessed with many privileges, one of which is the right to have our voice heard through our vote. I lived for five years abroad in a country that had limited free speech, basically no free speech, and predetermined elections. That experience, among other things, is what drags me to the poll no matter what to vote. Certainly not everybody's had that experience, though. The Norman transcript described the recent election turnout of 15% as good, but was it really? I suppose it was if you compared it to the turnout for the five special elections the city held in January, May, June, September, and October last year, where citywide voter turnout was 6%, 6%, 11%, 6%, and 8% respectively. Some of Norman's low voter turnout may be due to voter fatigue. Those five special elections, coupled with board primaries, runoffs, and state question 820, asked the majority of Norman voters to go to the polls seven, some eight, times last year. Individuals get wrapped up in their own sphere of interest. When it comes time to vote, they may think their single vote won't make a difference. They may not understand the issue, or they may feel that the issue being voted on isn't relative to what concerns them. Tragically, even some individuals don't realize that there's actually an election. Regardless of the reason, low turnout is a sign of decreased citizen engagement. Studies show that results of elections with low voter turnout are not typically representative of the entire community. I would like to see the city take action to determine why voter turnout is consistently low and take whatever measures it can to increase civic participation. A start to that would be consolidated voting, putting multiple issues on a single ballot, and where possible, combining municipal elections with state or national elections. It would reduce the number of times voters need to get to the polls to vote, and it would reduce the amount of funding the city spends for elections. And one last item I have for tonight has to do with whether a situation creates conflict of interest. I'm not stating or inferring that one exists or anybody's done anything wrong. During the election process, I reviewed many of the online campaign reports, and it gave me cause to wonder. Although many campaign contributions were small, some were rather large and did the multiple thousands of dollars. The question is this: Does a campaign contribution create a potential conflict of interest? One, given that the contribution is used to help the councilperson get elected? Two, that the councilperson gains from it financially through the salary they receive when elected to council? And three, if the individual or organization associated with the campaign contribution comes before you, council, on something that requires the vote of the council? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Stephen, oh, excuse me, Ben Plummer.
Hi, my name is Ben Plummer, and I'm in Ward four. And I would just like to read some notes I have about, about what is, you know, about So first, I'd like to say that I'm a disabled vet, and I'm a child abuse survivor, and a former Air Force, Security Forces, police officer. And I was also homeless as a child. And I have some spicy things to say, and they're not going to be what you would imagine. First I'd like to say is that you actually have to stop helping homeless people. And the reason is simple. The supply is unlimited. If you were to build a shelter of one, for 1 million beds, you would get 2 million people coming here. Transients have a grapevine. As somebody who was homeless when I was 16, 17, and 18, okay? They have a grapevine, and they talk to one another, and word spreads. So if you create a hospital, hospitable environment, more will come. What you should really do is you should get out of the way of the free market. You should allow unlimited housing development of 50 stories tall. In Japan, they have a unique zoning system where every commercial zone can also be a residential zone. So if I, if I had, if I could just wave my magic wand and have absolute power and do whatever I want, I would replace all commercial zoning with flex zoning, where you can build housing, and you can build, you can build a 50-story apartment building next to a Walmart, or even on top of a Walmart, if you want. And I would abolish any requirements for the size. I'd allow people to build capsule hotels. Japan has almost no homeless because if you can rent a capsule hotel for $3 a day, you can beg for the money on the side of the road, and now you have a place to stay. And I would not build shelters. I would build mental hospitals, but I would never build any shelters anywhere, and I'd outlaw them, actually, because all they do is facilitate crime and degeneracy. And that's, that's the first remark I have to say. And if I'm still, if I still have time.
You got 17 seconds, sir. 12 seconds.
And that's all I'll say.
Thank you.
Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward four. I spent my morning looking at some body camera footage from Norman police officers from the incident where they shot those dogs down by the river on February 21st. I'd filed an open records request, and part of it at least was satisfied. So I want to fill you in on a little bit on stuff that I learned there. The main thing is that things really didn't need to go the way that they did. According to the 911 notes, which was also part of what I got on the ORA request, the call for service was about unhoused people on the golf course property. Norman police immediately sent at least five, because that's how many I saw in the body camera footage, to trespass those people, and they sort of dove into it with a will because within an hour of getting the call, they were down there and running warrants on people who were down by the river. Note, all of that's really in sharp contrast with the encampment destruction that took place just to the west of that property on February 15th. On February 15th, there was a lot of preparation for that event, including contact with the continuum of care, and the Norman police sent some officers that were trained in de-escalation. Actually, the same guys who did the report on the nuisance house were the guys who were down there on the 15th. And that was not the case on February 21st. The officers knew that they were going to be potentially encountering dogs because they knew who was down there, and they knew that they had dogs. And the plan, such as it was, seemed to be to just cross that bridge whenever they came to it with whatever tools they happened to hand, have in hand, and the tools that they had in hand were their guns. They were walking, the two officers, I saw mostly the point of view of one who had the body camera, that was the one body camera that I saw, noted to the other officer who was with him, "I'm not skittish, you are," right? So they were kind of nervous walking down this, or at least they were giving each other a hard time about being nervous when they were walking down to where those dogs were. They came upon an empty structure, which was where the owner of those dogs was camping out. The dogs showed up second, and the officers were sort of in their camp. There's a brief period, just a few seconds, when the sort of lead dog stopped and was just barking. At that time, the officer who had the body camera already had their gun out. And the rest was the stuff that you saw if you saw the Fox TV cut of the same footage. The second dog ran past the first dog, toward the officer with a gun in his hand. That officer shot that dog twice, and the other dog was coming up to the other dog and hit him with four shots. So the contrast between February 15th.
Great. That's the problem. Thank you, sir.
Cynthia Rogers.
Good evening again. We're almost done. I didn't get to speak about the, the properties on Boyd Street, but I will make a few comments now. I like the three-foot setback because then there's no driveways. In my experience, I walk or ride my bike or walk with somebody who uses a wheelchair along there, and the three-foot setback means there aren't parking spots that people park in and block the sidewalk. So yay for that. That's much better for those that use the sidewalks. And I appreciate that there are first-floor apartments, but no access from the front, if we're contemplating that might be commercial use, is problematic. You know, always sending the mobility-limited people around the back of the building to get into a commercial space is just not very welcoming. So I hope in the future, we can think about that. I would have said something before, or maybe ramps can be added if that does get used into flex space. The comments about capsule hotels and things, I think those sorts of innovative things, a lot of space at the mall. I've seen those converted to affordable housing for seniors. Capsule living, capsule, day place, a day place to sleep is a very inexpensive way to go. And then in terms of housing, you know, one-size-fits-all shelter is probably not what we need. There are people with mental health problems, or people with addiction problems, and then there's people that just had some bad luck and are going through some bad times, and they don't necessarily need to be mixed with other people that have other struggles. And the one-size-fits-all thing probably isn't the best option we have. So I hope we can keep working on it, and I appreciate your diligence.
Thank you, ma'am.
Cheryl Ann Dinsel.
Good evening again. Cheryl Ann Dinsel, Wards four and six. I, I want to address something that was a little bit disconcerting to me, and I understand why it happened, but I just want you to be aware that it's very difficult for folks to come to city council meetings. And if you change the time to an earlier time, it's going to be even more difficult for the public to come to the city council meeting. So I hope you don't change the time again, ever, and make it earlier than 6:30. And then the second thing I want to address is, I noticed a lot of city council members on their cell phones. The city of Tulsa has banned cellphone use by council members because they don't want a lot of chit-chat and, and outside influence to the city council members. And, and I think that's a really good idea. And I understand that there's a little bit of a rule where, you know, it's not really an open meeting. if there's sidebar stuff going on, whether it's three people or four people or all of y'all together. That's not really an open meeting. So I would encourage you to monitor that and maybe create an ordinance for yourselves to put away the cell phones during our city council meeting. I think that would be more respectful to the citizens of Norman. Thank you.
Cheryl Ann, I mean, sorry. Chelsea Gravel. Carlinda.
Ward four, Carlinda Gravel, Mayor, Council. So I got some information today. I'm going to tell you what I was told that was legal, even though I'm not going to tell you what's legal and I'm not going to give you legal advice. So in regards to using my pepper spray, I almost had to use it today as an individual was chasing me and aggressively yelling at me down Main Street. So I was told that I don't have to wait till that individual is lunging at me to actually use my pepper spray. If I've let the individual know, "I need you to stop following me. You're scaring me. Stop following me," that if they continue to do so, I can defend myself with that. But I'd also like to point out, as we kind of continue discussions about a shelter. I hate to be a Debbie Downer, but we are never going to find a location for a shelter. Should we have someplace for people who are unhoused to go and get back on their feet? Those who want access to services, absolutely we should. How do we go about doing that? Well, we don't allow people in the community that are unhoused to do things that our housed individuals would not be allowed to do. We don't allow them to threaten people to behave erratically and dangerously. Just the other day, I took a photo because it was frightening. And I'm like, okay, this person's over here. You guys already know that we do a Facebook page. I was sitting on the corner, Porter and Main, had a large dog, three shopping carts loaded to the brim. Those aren't a concern for me at all. I'd be happy to walk by the individual if that were the case. I'd be happy to sit on a park bench with an individual that may or may not be homeless. Doesn't bother me a bit. I don't feel threatened. I don't feel unsafe. I'm not afraid of unhoused people. I'm not concerned about that. I'm concerned that the gentleman had a large chain wrapped around his neck tightly. I've watched him play with it on Main Street while he makes eye contact as an act of intimidation. I watched him shining up a chain-link fence post. Was he greasing it, as you would put a sock on a baseball bat? Was he shining it up? Was it an act of intimidation? I have no idea. Would I walk by that individual? Absolutely not. I would cross the street on the other side. I would be an idiot to walk by someone who is doing that, just in case. So these are the issues that we're facing in our city. It's not that we can't put in a homeless shelter. It's the kind of homeless shelter that you want. You want no guidelines. You want no restrictions. If we were going to have a mental institution, and we were going to allow mentally insane people to roam our streets in a state of mind that could be harmful to themselves or others, of course, we shouldn't do that. It would be unsafe for them and unsafe for our community. So as we move forward to try to make decisions that are happening in our community, I would just encourage you to keep in mind that it's not what we need to do in regards to an actual location for a shelter. It's the way we need to conduct that shelter. Because no matter where you put it, there are going to be residents and business owners. And it would be terrible to have to destroy that. Thank you.